Thank you for joining us this evening for the January seventh, two thousand and twenty five, Montessorito Regular City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and an agent to speak to the counselor. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants who plan to attend will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Okay, very good. So we've got a few seconds left before seven o'clock. So I would like first of all, thank true to for coming in this evening. They will be performing a flag ceremony, which will then roll right into our pledge of allegiance. My official apple tide. Got it. All right. Can we call the meeting to order and should we stand for the for the flight presentation?
I'll call it. Okay, I'll let you do that. Okay, it's all yours.
Audience, please rise. Color guard attention, color guard advance. color guard, prepare to post the colors, post the colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And each other here in the Capitol, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To. Color guard dismissed. Audience at ease. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shannon, here. Councilmember Megachuck.
Present.
Councilmember Wolsheimer.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lahey.
Here.
And Mayor Gray.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, would anybody like to make any changes to the orders of the day? Say none? Are there any announcements? Anybody have any announcements they would like to make? Okay, so we will start with our presentations tonight. And we have a presentation of certificates for recognizing the two thousand and twenty four STEM winners from the city of Montessorito. And Forrest, are you, if you'd like to come up and give a quick introduction about what these winners did? And are the winners here tonight, or?
No.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any kids or anything.
Well, they promised they will be here tonight, so maybe you'll. I would suggest that we move it till later in the evening, if that's appropriate.
Sure, we can do that.
Wait for them to be here.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, while I'm, while I'm here, I never give a politician time. You know, your rhythm, but our primary purpose is for the educating and getting students and family and friends and teachers and support staff to motivate these young people to become engineers, scientists, electricians, mathematicians, whatever the future will demand of us. And we look at it as a opportunity for us to shape the future. We know we're going to have difficulties. And we need the brightest and youngest minds to approach this problem. So that's the spirit in which we have the science fair. And we're around eight hundred students participating. They go from the county fair, state fair, and they go to the international fair. This is about seventy other countries. And they compete. And we went because our heart is there. We're no known for our technology. There's one passage that says, if Silicon Valley sneezes, the world catches cold. No, I appreciate you waiting until they arrive. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm just curious, when you said we, would you be kind enough to let us know who the organization is behind all this?
Well, the organization consists of fourteen board members throughout the county. And they have representatives of areas of technology, evaluation. We have the part of publicity, letting the world know what we do, letting them know what the kids do. And we ask for their support. So it's of these fourteen people is volunteer. And there's no random iteration for any of them. And they do it out of a heart and a desire to motivate the team.
That's excellent to do. I started to get the name of the organization itself.
Okay, it's Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association.
Great, thank you. Great. Now, does this have anything to do with all of the school science fairs? Does it start there or are these just all outside of the the school system?
No, they are for the cities within Santa Clara Valley.
Okay.
And each city has the opportunity to participate. And we try to recognize each group of students from the city in which they live. We want them to come back and let the community know what they're doing and how they can contribute to society in the future.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes. I could make a comment now or when the recipients are here. Whichever way you would like to do. So I'll, I'll make the statement. My daughter won one of these awards a few years ago. And she's now in her, in her senior year at Columbia. And she was working on the, over the holidays on her applications for her PhD in mathematics.
Wow.
So, you know, what you said resonates with me.
Thank you and keep it up. Thank you. My, I have two kids, only not kids anymore. But they are both engineers. One is a community science engineer and one is a, an environmental engineer.
Thanks.
But we didn't push them to be. We said, if you want a lifestyle, you want to contribute, you want to make society better, improve it, participate. And pay that. And that lifestyle that I said, you know, if you like the lifestyle you live and all those things, then you gotta make it happen. You know, I was just gonna rule it out to you and there will be a need. We have lots of need. There is nothing that you can do as an engineer, it's not us.
Sure.
Think of it. Your door, anyway, your computer top, we have, name it. They've touched it in some way.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. So do we, first thing, do we need to take a motion to change the orders of the day?
You can just continue this item to the end of the meeting because we have started it. We will finish it when.
Okay, do we need to take a motion on that? Okay, do I have a motion to continue this item to later in the meeting? Second.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, passes. So as soon as you see our recipients show up, if you could just let me know and we'll slot them into the next. And, and, and I'm sorry, we'll slot them in in between a completed agenda.
All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, oral communications, this is the opportunity for members of the public, members online. Talk about any item that is not on the agenda for up to three minutes. Hope your singing voices are in here. And former council member and mayor, Lon Allen, you had your hand up first, so.
Well, normally when I address the council, I say, we're spending too much money, let's spend less. But this is something where I would respectfully ask the council to consider smoothing out the, there's that little step there and someday, especially someone who, for an evening meeting is not used to it, I think we could have an injury. And I don't think it, we take too much of our own budget. I just invite the council to consider doing that. So it's safe. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I guess we better do that now because it's now officially been broadcast to the entire. And so when he plays it a lot already. I'm sorry.
Are you just talking about the step outside here?
Yes. All right, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name's Kevin Evans and I'm a resident on the Antata. I wanted to kind of give you guys a bit of an insight to a situation. I'm sure that Councilman Reber is very familiar with it. The S curve that has been worked on to try and calm the traffic seems to have created some unintended consequences. And one of those is cars now often veer into the bike lane and the pedestrian lanes. And just today, I was following a fellow and he cut the corner to miss the bump. He, he put his wheels effectively on the curb, rounded the corner and missed all three humps, if you will, but would have taken out anybody that would have been on the bike lane in the pedestrian path. I'm going to suggest that, and it also is difficult to see at night sometimes those bumps. I mean, I'm aware of them, but maybe some sort of markers that sit at the edge of the street on the, on the line, maybe the bike lane line will stop people from using the bike lane as a bypass. It'll also help to highlight those bumps for those that are unfamiliar with the street. So those are, that's kind of what I'm looking for. It's, it's at a point where people are almost using it as if it's a slalom course and it's, it's actually quite dangerous. And so you might have seen that. I see it any number of times. And just want to bring that to the council's attention and perhaps you guys can remember that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on that. I've noticed that also, I was putting out my garbage cans last Thursday. And I was just saying, somebody came around the corner, went around the bump and almost, and that's it, swerved again to miss me. So.
Yeah. Well, I've seen it too. It's, it's a real problem. Yeah. And I don't think the fix will be very expensive. Captain.
Sounds like a problem.
Sounds like a bad community there, too. I don't know. All right. Do we have anybody online who would like to speak for three minutes?
No hands are raised.
Okay, very good. That will bring us to the consent calendar. And would anybody like to pull an item from the consent calendar? No. Um, I'm not going to, I'm going to abstain on items number three. Uh, so you may want to, okay, take that. All right. So we'll go ahead and pull item number three. Yes.
I know, I think one of the items, I think it's number two. Meeting we had last time, I, I'm going to get it to our esteemed clerk. It's something that needs to be fixed. I had to say correct that.
Yes.
Well, can we, so we need to pull that and make a comment on what's being fixed?
It's already been fixed, but for your, when you approve, it'll include the corrections of including the official appointing of the mayor and vice mayor.
And the number three, that was unanimously definitely.
I believe we voted on it.
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
It's a word. Okay. So would any members of the public like to comment on any of the items on the consent calendar? Yes.
The flock cameras, one of the things that's going to be on that.
It's that, that'll be, it's coming up right after this, always. Great. Okay. Great. Okay, so can I have anybody online? That's what I was thinking for.
I mean, no hands are raised.
Okay, very good. So yes, council member, I was going to make a motion, please do. I'll make a motion to approve items two, four, and five on the consent calendar. A second though. Okay, do we need to roll call vote on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Megachuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolsheimer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shannon? Yes. Vice Mayor Lahey?
Aye.
Mayor Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. So that brings us now to item number three. Is there anybody who would like to discuss this item at all? Okay, any members of the public would like to comment? Anybody online would like to comment? Say none? I will entertain a motion for item number three.
I'm going to approve item number three of the calendar.
Okay.
A second.
We have a second. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Wolsheimer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shannon? Yes. Councilmember America?
I abstain.
Vice Mayor Lahey?
Aye.
And Mayor Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero, one.
Okay. Let's see who's coming in. Should we keep waiting?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay, very good. We're going to do this next item, though. They take a little while. So is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Then we're going to go to item number six, which is to authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement with the Flock Safety Group for installing and maintaining automated license plate reader to increase the safety of Montessorito. And do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. In response to comments from several residents last year who were concerned with various crimes within the city, the council included the installation of flock cameras throughout the city as one of the strategic goals for the current year. The council also approved funding of seventeen cameras in the current budget, which totals approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars and includes the initial one-time installation as well as the first year of annual service. With us tonight, we have Tariq from Flock in the chambers, as well as Captain Alvin from the police department, who can provide some additional information on the flock cameras after the staff report. And we also have Chris in the cloud from Flock Online, who, who will also give some information after, after the staff report.
Okay.
The current budget, as mentioned, includes one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the seventeen cameras and the first year of service. The annual cost for the ongoing service would be about fifty thousand dollars for each year thereafter. We're looking at the locations for the cameras. On the seventeen cameras that have been budgeted would provide good coverage for the majority of the city. However, if two additional cameras were to be installed, there would be a significant increase in the coverage to the city, particularly the Long Winchester Boulevard, where there are several streets that provide access into Montessorito. Additionally, Flock has a mobile camera that would allow the police department to deploy this device to specific neighborhoods or streets within the city in response to any particular concerns or as a crime deterrent. If the council does vote to proceed with the agreement, the timing of the installation will also need to be determined tonight. The current budget includes the funding of seventeen cameras for which the installation could begin immediately if directed at the council tonight. Alternatively, council has the option to delay the installation of the cameras until July first, which would allow the city to use next year's supplemental law enforcement service funds for the initial installation of the cameras, which would save about sixty thousand dollars from the city's general fund. The reason we can't do it this year is that this year's funds are already committed to the town of Los Gatos in accordance with the current police services agreement. However, the town staff has agreed to expand the use of these funds effective next year so that we could recover the one or use those funds to cover the one-time cost of the installation starting next fiscal year. So in summary, there are two decisions for council to consider tonight. The first would be whether or not to approve the agreement for the installation of the flock cameras. And if so, determine the number of cameras. Whether the seventeen cameras that have been budgeted for or if council wants to include one or two additional cameras and whether or not a mobile camera would be desired. And if the agreement is approved, the other decision to be made is regarding the timing of the installation. Whether we want to begin the installation immediately using the currently budgeted funds or delay the final installation until after July first to use the supplemental law enforcement service funds for, for next fiscal year. As previously mentioned, both Tariq and Chris, Kristen from Block are here tonight. And I will, I will now turn it over to Kristen. She is online and does have a presentation that provides more details about the actual use and capabilities of the block.
Okay, very good. Before we start the presentation, I wanted to see if any council members had a question that maybe could be addressed during the presentation. Okay, say none? Yes, council member Meg.
The gentleman from Block that's here?
Yes, sir.
Did I meet you at Long Beach? Uh, in the, I don't know what, in, in the hall, the exhibitor hall?
At Long Beach?
At Long Beach?
No.
For, okay.
I was here for another, another.
Oh, okay.
Lunch and learn for.
I was just, if, if we had met there, I was just going to disclose that we had a prior meeting that's on.
Nothing I'm aware of. Okay.
I guess since you asked whether we have any questions, it could be just a presentation. I, I just, I, I, you can probably answer that or present your answer to that. Are these the Fox, the Wi-Fi, the, the Wi-Fi, is that a hardwired connection to the network or is it a Wi-Fi connection?
They run off of solar and LTE. Sorry, I'm just saying. They run off of solar and LTE capabilities.
Solar energy gives the energy, but what about the Wi-Fi internet?
It's cellular.
Cellular through the.
Yeah, so.
Verizon or somebody.
Correct. So we actually work with multiple providers, whatever provider is going to be, have the best coverage for that specific site. So it would be over LTE for the, for the internet connectivity and then solar would be powering the devices.
Yeah, thank you.
If you have a question that might be addressed. It calls for the data that's collected to be held for thirty days, rolling thirty days. Can you talk a little bit about why it's thirty days, why that particular time period? It seems like a very long time period to me for something that was to happen sort of instantaneously. It's more aggressive.
Yes, that's, that's actually what Kristen's going to cover as part of our presentation.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump into, yeah.
The other questions that might be addressed during the presentation that you would like to focus on? Okay, thank you very much. And, and Kristen, I'm sure you're going to do this, but I would really like to make sure that everybody had a clear understanding of who has access to this data. Because there, there does seem to be some questions a lot of times and some concerns about that.
Certainly, yes. Thank you so much, Mayor, for that. We will absolutely cover, cover that in the presentation. Thank you all for your time this evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you. We're always happy to share, share information and answer any questions that you may have. With that, I will get right into our presentation here. Can you all see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I'm going to focus tonight on giving you an overview that's focused on our automatic license plate reading technology. With that, a very brief background on Flock as a company. So we're an Atlanta, Georgia-based company. We're founded in two thousand and seventeen by our CEO, Garrett Langley, after he himself actually experienced an uptick in crime in his own neighborhood. And in conversations with law enforcement and engineer by trade, he, he really wanted to figure out a really efficient, affordable, and ethical tool, and that's technology-based to increase community safety and provide, provide these efficient tools to law enforcement to help solve and actually prevent crime. So this all started with our flagship product, the Automatic License Plate Reader, again, which will be our focus today. Flock has since expanded into a multi-product platform. After listening to our customers and hearing the demands throughout the nation to support our law enforcement even more and get them the technology that is impactful to help them keep their communities safe. So across the country, we see that crime continues to hurt communities. To make matters worse, many police officers, departments, and communities, they don't have the technology that's really needed to do their job. This can actually also, we've seen, can also impact recruitment and retention of officers. All of that means longer response times, fewer resources directed towards crime prevention. This can oftentimes lead to more crime, less safety, and strained relationships with the community. So Flock really believes that we have the opportunity to help multiply your police force, protect your community and your first responders using ethical technology, collect and distribute objective evidence to the right user, your officers, and also engage the community to support and grow. And what I mean by that is Flock also, our customers are private entities, including businesses and neighborhood groups or HOAs. And those entities are able to purchase flock cameras and provide access to law enforcement so that they're really contributing to the community's public safety and expanding the resources that officers have out in the field. So as mentioned, we'll focus on our license plate recognition. This is a picture of the actual camera, which we call our Falcon. The cameras themselves, they're stationary, they're in fixed locations, they're motion activated, and the cameras are focused on capturing the rear of the vehicle. The image that you see on the presentation is a great representation of what the cameras are focused on and what they capture. You can see it's the rear of a vehicle and focused on collecting vehicle attributes. It's not about people or details on people. It's solely vehicle attributes. The cameras operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. For our law enforcement partners, they receive real-time alerts from the National Crime Information Center and the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, as well as alerts from custom hot lists that are created by law enforcement to alert on wanted vehicles. Something very important is really distinguishing what this is over what it's not. I really want to highlight and focus on what this is not. This is not facial recognition technology. We do not have that capability in our system. This is not collection of any biometric or sensitive information. This is capturing images of vehicles and plates that are on public rights of way. This is not speed tracking, red light cameras, or used for parking violations. And then the point, the data automatically deletes every thirty days. So Flock set that standard data retention. We feel that it balances the investigative value by providing officers thirty days of historical captured images to be able to, in the event a crime occurs and there's a delay in the reporting of a crime. Say, a great example, I think, is a residential burglary that occurs and the homeowners are on vacation. They come back a couple of weeks after the burglary, realize what's happened, and then report it. The officers would have that time to be able to look back historically to locate critical. The officers would have that time to be able to look back historically to locate critical evidence and information to inform their investigation. At the same time, that thirty-day mark, we believe, also protects your community's privacy. So at the thirty day, that rolling thirty-day mark, an image is hard deleted and unrecoverable at that thirty-day point. And again, that's balancing, it's not stockpiling images over the long term. But again, providing law enforcement that thirty-day window, that investigative value to solve and and address crime in the community. So as mentioned, to kind of summarize, how does ALPR deter and eliminate crime? Well, first, it's proactive. I mentioned those integrations with NCIC and the ability for officers to create a hot list alert so that when wanted vehicles pass by a camera, officers will be alerted within seconds of that vehicle's location. It's investigative, as we, I just mentioned, it provides that in for historical information going back thirty days, so officers are able to investigate and clear crimes, which has an impact on decreasing crime in communities. And lastly, Flock can also serve as a deterrent. Captain can speak to this, I'm sure. Oftentimes, word will travel fast amongst groups of folks who are intent on committing crime in your community. And once word travels around these circles that the cameras are in place, it makes it a lot riskier for those people to commit crimes in the community because they know that law enforcement will have that in that critical objective information to be able to solve crimes and alert when those suspect vehicles are in your community. Flock takes very seriously, and we believe in being a trusted partner. And we have put in place privacy and accountability mechanisms. That first point is really important. The footage, all of the images that are captured by the cameras in your community are owned by the agency, by your city, and will never be sold to private third parties by Flock, period. You mentioned the thirty-day data retention. That information at that thirty-day mark is hard deleted and unrecoverable. This also takes the human bias out of crime solving by detecting only objective data. Again, it's focused on alerting officers to wanted vehicles. All of our data is stored securely and it's end-to-end encrypted. All of the data, the images are stored on the Amazon Web Services cloud. Regarding accountability, in the Flock system, if a user is looking for a specific wanted vehicle, a search reason and a user number is saved indefinitely, and that creates an audit trail so that the administrators of the system can ensure that the system is being utilized in accordance with department policy. We are not connected to any registration data or third-party databases such as Carfax or DMV. And then something unique to Flock is we offer what's called a transparency portal feature. This is free, it's optional, and also customizable. And this is, we have here Los Gatos PD's, their their transparency portal. As you can see, it provides an overview, this is a public, I'll back up a little bit, this is a public-facing webpage that's generated by Flock. And it's used to share information on how the program, how the system is being utilized by the department so your community can understand a bit better. We provide an overview as to to what the system is and what it does, in addition to certain high-level statistics, you know, how many vehicles have passed by cameras within the community in the last thirty days, how many searches have been conducted, what other law enforcement agencies your department is sharing their information with, as well as a link to the ALPR policy that's down here. In addition, we also offer an insights dashboard. So while the transparency portal is a public-facing webpage, our insights dashboard is a tool for administrators of the system to really look and see how crime patterns are being impacted by the cameras, looking at return on investment. Is this making the impact that we we had hoped? And do we want to continue with this investment? In that insights dashboard lives the audit search history. So again, the administrators of the system can ensure that the use is in accordance with department policy. Flock operates as a subscription model, and what that means, or what that means for you, is that it's a really light lift for the city. It doesn't require you all to do the installation of hardware or to maintain that hardware. That is all on Flock. We provide the solar power, that installation, the ongoing maintenance. We spearhead the permitting process. We provide data, that data storage, the software updates, user training. All of that is included within that contract price. And lastly, just to to wrap up, so we are working with over four hundred law enforcement agencies within the state of California and including Forest Los Gatos PD, we're working with San Jose PD, Campbell PD, Los Altos. So we are no stranger to the communities in California and have seen some really remarkable results. This was shared with, from San Marino Police Department. After implementation, deployment of their cameras, after one year, they saw a seventy percent decrease in residential burglaries, a nineteen percent decrease in those serious violent offenses. And they also requested an increase of thirty-six percent in the number of cameras in their community as they had so much success in impacting their public safety. This is an example shared by San Ramon Police Department north of you all. So officers had received alert on a vehicle believed to be associated with a series of burglaries in the area. They were able to locate that vehicle fairly quickly. Officers found one and a half ounces of methamphetamine, stolen property and burglary tools in the vehicle. And they also reported that before Flock camera deployment, they had six stolen vehicle recoveries within an eight-month period. After Flock's deployment, they had twenty-one stolen vehicle recoveries in about eight months. This is an example Hillsborough PD shared with us. So Hillsborough officers received an alert from the Flock system that a stolen vehicle had entered their community. And oftentimes, we find that stolen vehicles are entering communities to commit other crimes, and this was the the case in this situation. Officers were able to conduct a traffic stop on that alert that it was a stolen vehicle. They found stolen mail throughout their community inside the vehicle, as well as items consistent with identity theft and other stolen property items. One suspect was on parole, the other had a pretty lengthy criminal history. And officers believe that that apprehension prevented up to sixty individuals from becoming victims of identity theft. Another example, a use case on the more serious violent offenses. San Mateo PD utilized license plate recognition information after an elderly woman was the victim of a home invasion robbery. When suspects of that robbery drove past a Flock camera after fleeing the scene, it ultimately, the information captured by the cameras, officers were able to narrow down suspect information and were able to find a registered owner using their collateral information. And they believe that without license plate recognition, they would have not been able to have that investigative lead that ultimately led to solving the case. And then lastly, you know, license plate recognition, there are tons and tons of stories of of success in in impacting different types of crimes and different use cases. I always like to share that we've had incredible success, not only impacting crime in communities, but also helping recover missing persons. This is an example of a silver alert. So a missing elderly gentleman went missing, they were able to, first responders were able to enter his information into the Flock system, create a custom alert, and they ended up locating him after he crossed over the border into Mexico and returned. And again, they were able to to locate his vehicle and return him safely home to family members. So just another, a different type of use case, but certainly LPR has been quite impactful in those situations as well. And with that, I will stop and pass it over to Captain Albin to to add some some additional insights and thoughts.
It's funny, I was so engrossed in watching the presentation and then I heard my name. Media talk, but she definitely gives a good, a good presentation, all information that I knew, but you know, it's it's always good to hear it because it reminds you exactly why we're here, being proponents of of this technology. Originally, when we had talked about this presentation, we had talked about me giving a couple of anecdotal examples over the past couple of years of times that we had used automated license plate technology and Flock for, you know, successfully solving crimes. And I had pulled some cases that were a couple of years old, but in the last just probably month or so, we've had a couple of cases that came to mind that was getting ready to talk tonight that I thought were more timely because I'd rather talk about how we're using the technology now rather than several years ago. So I will say that in the last couple of weeks, December of now last year, still feels odd to say, we had, it was a Los Gatos case, but the juvenile victim is a Monte Sereno resident, so I felt like there was a nexus there. There was effectively a drive-by shooting via paintball gun. And this juvenile was struck and injured very badly. And as you may not be surprised, sometimes juveniles are not the most forthcoming with talking about what happened in incidents like this. And both through the use of cameras in the downtown area in Los Gatos, as well as automated license plate reader technology, we were able to figure out who committed this crime. And in very short order, we had suspects identified and we were able to file some very serious felonies against those individuals for that crime. Had we not had the technology that we have and the camera technology that we have, I would like to say that we have some pretty amazing detectives and that we still would have solved this case. But I do not think we would have solved it as quickly as we solved it, which was inside of a couple of days. And, you know, as a parent myself, and I'm sure a lot of you are, I know you are, because it sounds like your child is very successful. The last thing we want is for anything to ever happen to our kids. And if, God forbid, something does, I think the only thing that we would hope for is justice. And so we couldn't go back in time and have this not happen, which I wish we could. But we could at least get this family some justice and some closure, so you know, we're holding the people that hurt your child responsible. And that was in no small part to this technology. Another thing slightly more recent than that was the first of the year, we had a event for last night of Hanukkah, also in Los Gatos, in Town Plaza Park. And it was the same day that the unfortunate incidents happened in New Orleans and Las Vegas. And so we were very cognizant of having a large group of people collecting for any type of religious event in a public park. And so we did many things in preparation for that event. But one thing that we did is we do have this technology on our police vehicles. And we drove around the exterior of the park as well as the adjacent area, and we were able to collect the information from all the different vehicles that were parked there, both to see if any came up from any of the different lists that were mentioned in the presentation, whether it be stolen vehicles or hot lists, which are lists that are created for people associated with very specific crimes. As one of many preventative efforts that we could do to make sure that that event and the people there felt safe. And also, it's over, so I don't feel like I have to knock on wood it went fine, but had something happened, we would have had so much suspect information because we would have been able to look back and see what cars were coming in and out of that area post and prior to that event. And so, you know, it takes many, many forms as technology, both of something that you can use in response to crimes, as well as something that you can hopefully use to prevent crimes. Another thing that I thought of while I was sitting and listening to the the public comment was the S-turn that now I'm aware of, and I'll be sharing with patrol to make sure that we can do some passing checks in that area and traffic enforcement, is in regard to the Flock Flex camera that I know is one of the things for consideration tonight. That is the portable deployable camera. Is that in an instance like that where it's not something that's occurring necessarily in the periphery of the community, but something inside the community, if we become aware of something that we would like to apply this technology to, if we have a camera like this that we can deploy to a particular area where we have identified a problem, it can be extremely useful. Both because, as you mentioned, you were almost hit. We don't want it to happen. Hopefully patrol's going to do a good job and we're going to crack down with your help, maybe with some engineering of that area to make sure that everybody can be safe in that bike lane. But should something happen, if, for instance, somebody was struck, had we deployed this technology there, the Flex that we talked about, which we could put in that location since we've now identified it as a problem, we would be able to look at the date and the time, and we would have a license plate and a vehicle description of the perpetrator, without which we would be reliant on probably the person that got hit by a car, which with adrenaline and everything else, depending on the direction the car came, they might may not even know who did it. And so, as silly as it seems, it it really is saying a force multiplier for this technology. It's really what it is because it allows us to have an awareness and eyes places that we can't be everywhere all the time. And this helps us kind of narrow that margin of of places that we can be. So like I said, when I heard that example, I thought, oh, that would be something that we could really use this technology for. Other other places that we could use it would be if we have complaints, say, on like a walking trail or open space in a park. You know, we could deploy it there, again, just for the time that, whatever the complaint was, to help us if it were vehicles that were, you know, racing in the middle of the night or something. And so, again, I I really like the idea of that, and I ask you to consider it because I do think investigatively it could be very helpful. And I like the idea of being able to apply it to, you know, neighborhood complaints as they arise. So those are my anecdotal stories that I'm sharing with you all tonight. And with that, I will sit down and be available should there be any questions I can answer.
Okay, thank you. Back to staff.
So that was the information that we had to present tonight, and we're, there won't be any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Yes, council member.
I I guess I took the time to go through what's available on the internet, and the Flock has done a tremendous job as far as information. All of the concern is one of civil liberties, as far as violations and installments, all the data is kept. And the thing we need to consider is that it is too long. There is at least an incidence of data leakage where the data was sent supposedly to go to the police department, but other people it's a story in the wire, but I think it's today's story, by the way. There's another incident where there's a lawsuit that's been filed against the city of Virginia City by the Institute of Justice for privacy violation. Is there an indemnity clause in this? If we get sued for civil rights violation, would Flock reimburse us?
There is indemnification regarding certain things, so it has to do with the technology and things like that. I I will pull it up and look at it to make sure it covers that specific incident, but there is an indemnification.
Yeah, so if the civil rights violation, for example, if somebody says you're violating privacy at the city, would we be, would Flock reimburse us for that?
So it would depend on if the violation was related to the capture of the information versus the use of the information. So as the technology is, they they collect it, but then police department would use it. And so it would would be a factual issue that we would have to look to, but let me look at the language.
I mean, as a city, we're looking for broad indemnity, regardless of what the end result goes, whether the police department uses it or somebody else uses it. The city has put them in there, so we are going to be responsible.
Right, so we we have two avenues of indemnification. That would be this Flock camera agreement. But we also have a contract with the town of Los Gatos for police services, which includes indemnification as well.
Yeah, but we're looking at Flock at this point.
Yeah.
Police department, you don't want to pick up. They're they're, so those are the two two really serious concerns I have. I don't know if you've heard that story about what happened in Virginia. The the, I guess it's Nashville, Tennessee, where there was a leak, a data leak. And that's that's today's story, so you may not have seen it. And apparently, the question was whether the the data that was being transmitted to the police department was on a private network or a public network and or got into a public network, so other people could look into it. And so the other one, this lawsuit that was filed in Virginia City, if you have any knowledge of that or hear any comments on that, please, I would appreciate those.
One, one thing I wanted to do was ask the the captain if she could walk us through how the police Um, one, one thing I wanted to do was ask the, the captain if she could walk us through how the police. Use or, or activate a, a Flock investigation. So if um, if a burglary were to occur at Monte Sereno, the detective would come, he would. Talk to the people who were burglarized, he came and talked to the neighbors, cause my neighbor was burglarized. And the detective came and talked to us and I was able to show him some video from my security camera. And based on that, I'll kind of let you take it from there, what, what, how, how did that kind of play out a little bit?
Sure, um, I, I think there's a couple of different um, answers to that scenario. Uh, one is, is if you had your own personal surveillance camera, um, then we could augment. Um, based on the date and the time information using that uh, to search area Flock cameras, assuming that we have them in this scenario. Um, especially because if the likelihood, I would assume, is it wasn't one of your immediate neighbors that burglarized your house, it was probably somebody from the outside. So they would have had to get to your house. And so using your surveillance camera to get the date and the time. Uh, we would be able to check the system on our end at the police department. Um, put in those parameters and then we would be able to put in the vehicle information that we ascertained from. Uh, your surveillance and search for similar vehicles or that vehicle uh, leaving or entering or passing. Um, any of the cameras, you know, in, in the, the jurisdiction. Um, generally speaking, if a crime happens, like the example that uh, Kristen gave um. To the point about the thirty days, uh, imagine that you go on vacation, perhaps you're on vacation for two weeks. And then you come back and you find out that something happened to your home, whatever it weight, maybe vandalism, burglary, what have you. Um, you're busy and then it's a couple more days and then you contact us, now we're getting into three weeks. Um, and now we have a, a span, you know, of quite a long time that this might have occurred because you weren't there to see it. Um, and we enter that information in the Flock system, again, at the police department. Um, and we look to find vehicles uh, that could have been associated with that crime, but again, occurred when you were not there. And we look back in time before we had this technology. Um, and if you were on vacation, if you don't happen to be lucky enough to have nosy neighbors that are watching your house all the time. If you didn't have surveillance cameras, there would be no way to know, there wouldn't be, and that, that was how it always was. Um, so again, back to that idea of force multiplier and eyes being where they can't always be because of this technology. Um, we actually utilized uh, the system today. Um, I was not doing it because I was watching our uh, detective sergeant doing, he's an administrator. Um, and you put on the top right, there's a line where you put in the reason that you're doing it. Um, and then you put the parameters into the database, um, and it brings up uh, results. Uh, we were looking uh, for a particular personalized plate, so we put that in and all the results came up. Of the different locations and times and places that it had been located, so. Um, nothing familiar with the cases that you brought up, I'll defer to Flock on those. Um, I will just say anecdotally that, you know, Flock is used in, I don't know, is it thousands?
Absolutely, it's about every single state within the US.
Which is not to say that one instance of uh, data being released, and again, I don't know the details of that, so I don't know what happened. Uh, is not a concern, uh, but I do know that this technology is used across the country, um. To make communities safer, uh, and it is generally used the way it's supposed to be used, and at least on the police department side. Um, if somebody were to use it in a way that was inappropriate, that violated our internal policies, which are consistent with state policies. Uh, they would be held accountable. Again, everything is, there's an audit trail. Um, as I saw today firsthand, you put in exactly what you're using it for and you're logged in as yourself. So there is a tracking mechanism to know who was looking, um, and if the reason that they were looking was an inappropriate reason. Um, they will be held responsible internally, um, in terms of an internal investigation by the police department. And if it's used for something that violates uh, state law or is criminal, then they would be held accountable, obviously, uh, criminally. Um, and so there definitely are checks and balances uh, to make sure that everybody is using it for what it is supposed to be used for. Um, and the thirty day uh, time period, I would say is consistent with. The majority of communities uh, across the state and across the country, um. I'm sure that they can give you percentages, but having researched it, both at my last agency uh, and here. Um, the majority of them, it is the industry standard to do thirty days. And it is again, because as I mentioned, last time I was here with the chief, unlike television where we solve crimes inside of an hour. And sometimes it can take a week or two weeks or three weeks uh, to wrestle down suspect leads. And really get to where you need to in an investigation, and so if the information were only held for a week. Or for six days, or God forbid, twenty-four hours, by the time that we knew what we were looking for, it would be gone. And so thirty days is, I would view it as, it does seem like a long time, but in terms of an investigation. It's actually not that long at all, and then after thirty days, it's gone.
So just a couple of follow-up questions, um, Flock mentioned thirty day retention of data. But if there is a picture that was part of an active investigation, that picture would be saved.
Yes.
That picture doesn't disappear.
Correct, uh, thirty days is for any of you and myself, because we're not committing crimes, uh, it would be gone. However, if a vehicle is found to be associated with a crime uh, or in an active investigation. Then yes, that information would be kept longer, um, as we would want it to be, because it's now been determined that's it, part of a criminal investigation.
Okay, and then if there is a need to use Flock, do all of the requests roll up to your detective sergeant? Or can any officer go to the terminal and put in their information and, and conduct a search?
We do have administrators, which is what he is, that have administrative rights. Um, however, yes, the officers uh, that work for the Los Gatos Monterino Police Department. Uh, do have the capability uh, to use the system in the police department and in their cars. Um, for all the reasons that we talked about. Um, and again, at my last agency, which I only bring up because I think it's relevant and it relates. Uh, there was a concern about that exact point, about so many people in the police department, the officers only, having access to such uh, personal information. And as I explained when it came up there, you have to understand that. We go through background processes, we go through the police academy, we go through all this training and there is generally understanding that we're trustworthy, as we should be. Um, and we have access to so many different systems as part of the job that we do. Um, with or without the Flock information, you know, we run driver's licenses when we pull uh, vehicles over. And you know, we get the information about uh, you associated with your vehicle with your driver's license. That's something that we get through state and federal systems, that's nothing to do with Flock. Um, and so, the information that we have access to through this system. Is just one piece of a lot of different information that those of us that choose to do this job have access to. And promise that we will be responsible with, and again, if for some reason. Somebody was not and used it for the wrong reasons, then whether it just be an internal investigation or criminal charges, they would be held accountable.
Okay, and can uh, citizens. Start a public records request to find out what information has been searched for in Flock? Or how the system is being used, or are they able to initiate any types of audits or anything?
Well, again, they do have the uh, uh, transparency portal, that I mean, you could bring it up on your phones right now and look at it. Um, it does talk about how many vehicles plates have been captured in a thirty day period, it couldn't be longer than that, because again, after thirty days, it's gone. Um, and so it does talk about how many vehicles uh, plate information has been captured. In terms of public records request, I will defer to the attorney, however, from the watered-down law enforcement amount of information that I know about the law. Um, I do know that information that is part of investigations is not subject to, active investigations is not subject to public records request. Uh, so I would anticipate that you would not be able to PRA how we had used it for our investigations. Um, but again, I'll, I'll defer to the attorney in the room.
So that's correct, if it's part of an active investigation, it would be exempt from disclosure, uh, but that. Wouldn't prevent someone from ass- asking for, you know, any records that include my license plate number. So you could ask for that, um, and a search would be required to be produced unless, unless you were involved in an active investigation. So they are public records to some extent, um, but we only have them for thirty days. And we, because we, the city of Monterino, won't have access to this information, we will be working with uh, Los Gatos to respond to this.
Okay.
And again, that, in that period, since you're correct, we would be able to tell you perhaps, I would imagine, how many times in the last thirty days. Um, because longer than that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the information.
Alright, great, thank you, so I'm sorry, I kind of had a question, a question time there for a while, my questions didn't need to be answered, yes. Would you get to respond to the question I, I posed?
Yes, thank you so much, um, I appreciate the opportunity to respond, so. Um, first of all, council member, when you referenced the um. Uh, what happened in Tennessee as far as the leaking of information, that was not Flock uh, camera, that was a different vendor. And um, so this situation would not be easily replicable on a Flock camera, they're just fundamentally built differently. And also, we do not utilize public IP addresses. And lastly, circumventing um, our built-in access controls would be needed in order to gain access to data on the camera. So again, uh, this was not a Flock camera that this, this happened with. Um, we take great care with data security, even though there is no sensitive or biometric information contained in the Flock system. We take, again, we take the, the utmost care of your, of your, of your data, we're encrypted end-to-end. Um, and it's stored securely on, on the Amazon Web Services cloud while at rest. And then I would like to um, address, so the case out of Virginia, that was. Um, one circuit court case and um. Subsequent cases have found, and also in appellate and federal district courts in. At least fourteen different states have upheld the use of evidence. Um, from license plate readers as constitutional without requiring a warrant, um, and I'd like to share that. Again, these are taking photos, still images of cars in public. And they cannot continuously track the movements of, of any individual. Um, so hopefully that, that clarifies and um, alleviates some of, some of those concerns that you brought forth.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah, I think Becky pointed out that cameras are what roller camera, but uh, the case itself is a. Question of civil rights, not necessarily a question of whether evidence can be used or not. So, so my concern really is whether we will be fully indemnified with the civil rights case that's uh, against the city. Would you guys have any problems with indemnifying us if civil rights lawsuit is filed against the city, for using the Flock cameras?
So that's something that would have to be posed to our legal team.
So I did, I did work with um, their legal team on the indemnification as well as the li- limits on liability. And um, they do, there is indemnification for negligence um, on their behalf. But their position is that they're, they are capturing images and nothing else. And that they would not indemnify uh, for a blanket coverage, personal rights violation. In addition to that, um, they originally were agreeing to, to limit liability to only one year. The amount, the maximum amount would be the one-year cost of the contract, we were able to get them to agree to two years, but there is still a limit on how much they would be responsible for. Um, except to the extent it would be covered by insurance. So in most uh, instances, that would probably be something like a camera falls over onto somebody and there's some damage resulting from that. Um, but it wouldn't necessarily be anything beyond that, like civil rights violation.
So, so would our insurance though indemnify us if a civil rights lawsuit is brought against us for installing these Flock cameras?
Um, they, they would also have exclusion, so it would be a case-by-case basis. But civil rights violations are typically covered, um, to an extent. As we know, that, that can be changed if it's determined that the person was acting um, egregiously or in others, other circumstances. But that, that should be covered, um, if it was, and again, as I mentioned, and of course, we wouldn't, we've worked closely with Los Gatos and they're a partner in this. But we do also have um, protections in our contract with the town of Los Gatos.
Yeah, so, yeah, the police department, I have no issue, I think you guys will be very helpful. I just have an issue with uh, civil rights indemnification claim being filed against us. And whether you have coverage from Minnesota, or whether you have to help with a million dollars to satisfy somebody, like the ACLU is already saying. By any civil rights, it should be done, and I suspect some cases are going to be filed.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's a, um, and I don't know how often this situation um, occurs in Flock's experience. But you know, that we are somewhat unique in that it is not the city of Monterino's police department. Um, we contract for police services with another agency, and so we really, other than entering into this contract with Flock and. Paying for the cameras, we aren't taking any affirmative action with this information. Um, but the, the town is, and so it, it is somewhat unique in that, you know, we've have a great partnership with Los Gatos. And so we're able to, to work out this situation, but they will be accessing all of the information through the town, not through us. And no one from the city of Monterino will have access to this information.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but I don't think we can escape liability because we are the ones who are very good and solid. And so as an owner is liable for everything that happens on their property in this sense. Alright, you answered my questions, thank you.
So, but let's ask, in the seven years that Flock has been in business. How many of these type of lawsuits have been brought against jurisdictions that are using Flock cameras?
So, gosh, we're in over five thousand communities and I will go back to our legal team and, and get you a definitive answer. Um, but I, I am aware of the Virginia case, but not of any, of any others. So I can certainly check with them and get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I can check. Oh, do you wanna go first?
I don't know.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this correctly. Um, we're looking at seventeen cameras in the base case. And then an additional two locations plus one mobile for a total of twenty, is that correct?
Yes, up to, or.
Oh, okay. How many exists, are, how many cameras, Flock cameras are on city of Monte Sereno property today? Not, not including the private ones, the public ones.
We don't, there are zero today.
There are zero today, how many are there in the town of Los Gatos on their property? And I know people that have an H, that are part of an HOA and they have their own Flock cameras that they pay for from the HOA.
Check, um, so uh, Los Gatos has seventeen that are owned by the city at the moment, or PD. Um, and then your neighbor Campbell, I believe, has thirty-nine, just to give you a comparison.
Saratoga?
There's the county.
Saratoga is county-owned, so I'm not sure exactly how many are specific to the city of, of Saratoga, but I do know that I think the county has twenty-plus cameras.
Okay.
And that, I think it's combined with Cupertino as well.
So we would be effectively doubling the number of deployed cameras. In the base case, and we would be more than that if we did the plus-two and the mobile. Is that correct?
Or on publicly owned cameras, yes.
For publicly owned cameras. Do we know how many privately owned cameras we have in the city of Monte Sereno that are deployed?
I believe there's six HOAs um, that are currently, or six locations, sorry, that are deployed. Um, I have to look and see exactly how many cameras are at each location, but it would be one to two at each location, generally.
Okay, and, and those are generally on the interior of the city.
Correct, there's only one of them that's on the exterior and we, we removed a site. Uh, we removed one of our cameras that we had originally planned for because you already have that entryway covered. So we, we built the site map off of uh, both our solutions consultant, which has twenty-plus years of investigative work within the PD. Um, we pretty much built the map out from a web case, if you will, kind of like a spider web. It's gonna cover the ingress and egress parts of the town. Uh, and then more of the HOAs and private cameras are gonna be more of the inner-city cameras.
Okay, um, this is a question for the captain. Is there, uh, do you believe that investing in the seventeen plus the three gives us twenty? Do you believe that will uh, help in preventing? Uh, criminal activity in the city of Monte Sereno and in our community, which includes Los Gatos?
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely do, um, not to go back and belabor the analogy. Uh, but the false multi- force multiplier and the having many eyes, I think really applies. But you have to think, every place that we have a camera, it's like putting eyes. Um, and so imagine if we put, for instance, less uh, for cost savings or because we wanna dip our toe in the water. Um, and so imagine if we put, for instance, less, uh, for cost savings, or because we want to dip our toe in the water first. Um, and then something happens to a house that's in one of those locations that we opted not to put it. It's, it's going to be very frustrating, I would assume, for the person that lives there. And so the idea behind coming up with these locations, um, and the number went up, uh, actually when we walked around, uh, your, our community. Um, and it was interesting because there was one location that we wanted to put a camera that a tree had completely overgrown where we were going to put it. Uh, we couldn't have put it if we wanted to, and then it resulted in the tree. I think it was a city tree being taken out, and so it actually ended up being kind of a community betterment walk amongst other things, but in looking at the different locations, um, that was how we had identified that it may behoove us to get two more was because we were looking at some of the more busy streets, and I personally said, well, that's great that you're getting people when they're leaving, but wouldn't you love to get them when they're coming in? What if, what if they, you know, came in a different way and left a different way, and then it happens to be the direction that we're not covering, and then we lose them? Um, and so yes, I would advocate for more, um, because the more places that we cover, the more places we can get criminals when they're coming in or leaving. Uh, you know, our community after unfortunately having victimized us, so. Um, I do think it is a good amount of cameras, uh, just based on, again, the entrances and the exits, uh, to the community. Um, and especially given the type of crimes that we've seen, just, you know, in the, what, seven months since I got here. Um, you know, largely caused by people that do live outside, almost all, outside the community. Um, taking vehicles to commit these crimes and using vehicles to leave after having committed them. And so I do think that there is value, uh, in the locations that were selected to effectively create a web uh, around the community. And again, the idea of having the one that we can deploy would be more for those instances where there are specific neighborhood issues that would behoove us to have eyes that are interior to the exterior weather.
Use words, the phrase force multiplier, uh, several times, and, uh, Chief Fields uses that all the time.
Oh, really?
Yes. Absolutely, it's a buzzword. Um, so we don't have unlimited resources. And to me, uh, I'm, I'm wondering how fast that, if we delayed this until July the first, what date would the cameras go live here? The, and I'd be advocating for the twenty. Versus if we kind of sign something today and then it just kind of got deployed. I'm ju- I'm wondering about the time period between if we, if we go right away, or if we wait to July first, how many, how many days are we exposed? That's what, and I'm trying to wonder about the trade-offs for that, if you could speak to that and also the folks from Flock.
Yeah, I will say, and I will defer to Flock in just a moment, but I, I will say that I I had the exact, I think almost verbatim, I'm quoting the chief and you're quoting me now, so I had the exact same thought process. Uh, because I said, you know, every day that we don't have this technology is, you know, another day that we have, you know, one hand tied behind our back. Um, and so that was my concern as well. Um, so I will defer to Flock to put our minds at ease.
And others, thank you again. Um, so if we were to defer to July, we wouldn't be able to actually start the project until then. Um, so it would maybe not be installed until potentially August. Um, there may be a few ways where we can kind of almost like put it on hold, if you, if you will, if it was like signed at an earlier date. And starting the project early June, or sorry, early July, but I have to look more, uh, more in depth to give you a, an exact answer there. Um, if you guys did decide to move forward with today, uh, we have a great, uh, relationship already with the town of Los Gatos in regards to uh, permitting and things like that, have already had discussions with them, so I think it would move pretty fast, like, pretty quickly. Um, so general installations are going anywhere from six weeks, um, to maybe three months, I would say, to, to get a camera up and, up and going. Uh, and that's without having that relationship, so, um, couldn't guarantee it, but I would say we could expect anywhere between four and six weeks, maybe before the first camera would probably be in the ground. And then the flex camera, we could probably get almost immediately out to you.
Okay, so that.
The permitting is the, is the process that takes a little longer.
What? What's your year-end, Flock's year-end?
Uh, our fiscal year-end just ended, so we're, we're starting to queue on right now.
So it's, it's not a revenue recognition issue for you guys?
No.
So you, you know, you would be able to recognize your revenue regardless?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, uh, also, something that came up, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's not like they all have to be installed before the whole thing goes live. Um, as each camera is installed, it, it goes live, correct?
Correct.
So as soon as they got the first one in, that one would be active, and, and so forth.
And I know that we, we briefly talked about if we went the route of using next year's funds, the contract dates, et cetera. Um, once we kind of iron out those details as to which direction you guys would like to go, um, I can obviously work uh, to find out a way to make that work for you guys, whether it be, you know, the contract date of the contract has to be after July for you to move forward, but if we were able to start the project earlier, we can see if there's ways to do that, um, et cetera. So, uh, you guys kind of let me know what's, you know, in your best interest, and I'll find a way to make that, that work for you guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if, if I could just add also, um, we would work with, if, if the council would choose to delay the final installation until next fiscal year, we would work with Flock, we could sign the agreement before then with the stipulation that the final installation wouldn't happen until after July first. And then, um, as Trish mentioned, as and cameras are installed, as the initial installation is maybe able to take place before July first, just the final completion of the project and, um, our payment to Flock would have to be July first or after. So it may be able to start May.
Okay, okay, councilmember, what's happening?
Thank you. And I'm assuming we go forward with this, um, if a block camera gets damaged, stolen, vandalized, or otherwise, uh, rendered inoperative, who would be responsible for the replacement cost?
Uh, if it's like a manufacturer defect or something went wrong with it, then we would replace that on-site. Um, but if the device was stolen, um, our support team is pretty good about working with you guys. Uh, but if it's something that's reoccurring, it would be something that would have to be, uh, repurchased. Um, but there has been instances where we can, you know, try to find a way to work best with you guys regarding the issue.
Are you aware of, uh, events like that, uh, cameras getting stolen or?
There's been, there's been very few incidents of it. Um, I had one out in the valley, um, where someone took the camera down, broke it down, and then tried to sell it back to police department for, for financial gain, so it's you can kind of guess where the, that person's mind was at. Uh, but that's really the only interest, uh, uh, you know, uh, time that I've heard of that.
You can also guess what happened to that.
Yeah, well, they tried to sell it on Facebook, and then someone called the police, and the police said, give them my number, and they met up to sell it and got arrested.
So effectively, Flock was still a crime-saving, crime-solving tool.
Indeed. Um, and like we said, it's based off emotion, so they were actually able to have the images of the guy trying to, trying to break it down, but um, the cameras sit about thirteen feet tall on a flock pole generally, or they're going to be on your existing infrastructure. Light poles, very hard to get to, someone would have to effectively be out there with a ladder to even, to get to it, and I'm sure they would be recognized by then.
Yeah, but if you want to commit a serious crime, and you know where the cameras are, you could just wait, yeah, spray-banned, whatever.
Yeah. Haven't really, you haven't really heard in many instances of that taking place as of yet. Thank you. Or hopefully they'll go find another neighborhood.
Uh, if I may.
Yes.
Questions as well? Um, I'm wondering, this is probably for you, Diana, the S L E S of funds that we receive them and then we turn them over to Los Gatos because of our partnership with the police department. Is this the first time that you're aware that we've ever been able to sort of direct what has happened with those funds, or is this typical?
So under our current agreement for police services with the town of Los Gatos, we are obligated to, um, um, send those funds that we receive to the town for additional, um, traffic control services within Monteserino. The current agreement or police service does expire on June thirtieth. So we are working on new agreements that would be effective, and in that new agreement, um, the town is um, amenable to providing additional uses for the, those funds. And they have, um, verbally committed to be able to use the funds for the block cameras.
Okay, so, so that would be the first time that we've ever actually uh, had an agreement where specifically how those funds are going to be used by Los Gatos through the
So at least for the last ten years.
Yeah.
Prior version of the contract, prior to two thousand and fifteen, I think. Um, it was sort of a negotiation where we would, the, the city and the town would get together to talk about what the needs of the police department were, how that, that would benefit the City of Monteserino, and it was used for a variety of things. Um, and then when a significant event occurred in town, they added the requirement that it be used for additional patrol hours. And so, um, in the version of the contract that we're currently working on, it provides more flexibility, um, but recognizing that technology is important to both jurisdictions.
Okay, and then I, another question by me, um, the block WEX camera. Does Los Gatos currently have one of those? And kind of a secondary part of that is has the police department ever considered just purchasing one outright that they can use to mobilize wherever they want, rather than having the city purchase additional block layers? So Captain Alvin?
Yeah, um, part of my deep dive into everything Flock today in preparation for this meeting was that, uh, we had slash have uh, not the Flex, bear in mind, I don't work for Flock, so I don't know the exact, it's, uh, I believe it's one of the Falcons that was on a radar trailer. Uh, the radar trailer, somebody asked about this, uh, was hit by a car. Uh, and, um, the camera had to be fixed. Uh, and so that one, which would be the closest thing that we have currently, because it was on a radar trailer that we couldn't move. Um, it's, uh, not subtle, because it's a radar trailer, um, but, uh, that camera was offline, and actually, my asking questions to everybody today resulted in somebody thinking, I wonder what happened to that camera that was on the trailer that got hit by a car, and we found out that it's actually good and we could use it again. Uh, maybe not on that trailer, um, but on something significant size like that. Um, the Flex, I believe, is newer technology. Uh, what I personally like about it, am I allowed to give you a paper about it that you can pass around, or is that violatable? Okay, hold on. Uh, I was trying to read about it today, should I get asked questions, because again, I don't work for Flock, and I only know generally what it does. Uh, and so I was curious how long it lasts, how you deploy it, et cetera. So effectively, that was a PDF on the Flock site. It's, I believe it's battery-powered, you charge it, uh, and then it can last up to thirty thousand cars, which is a lot of cars, uh, before you would need to recharge it again. Um, and it, part of what you get with it is like a little, looks like maybe a, like an arm clip or something, so you could clip it anywhere on a tree, on a pole, on, you know, anything. Uh, and so we don't have anything like that right now. Um, and I believe the way that it came up, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, was that when we were originally doing our walk-around, and then there was communities that came forward and said that they may want to get their own cameras. We thought, well, is there anything, since we were thinking of getting a certain amount of cameras anyway, is there anywhere else that's missing that we could augment, since now we have the opportunity? Um, and this was, I believe I may have mentioned that where I used to work, we had a lot of these radar trailers that we used to deploy. Uh, and that was how I learned about this newer technology that I wasn't previously aware of. And I thought, oh wow, this would be really great, uh, for all the reasons that I mentioned. And so, um, no, it hasn't come up before. I'm not aware of how new the technology is, uh, but, uh, regardless, uh, regardless if we get it here, uh, or in the future, it is definitely something I would advocate for, um, and would plan to use in this community as well as Los Gatos, uh, regardless of how today.
And then, uh, just one more question, if I may, um, somebody commented, I think you did comment, that Los Gatos has seventeen cameras right now. And we're looking at Monte Sereno installing anywhere from seventeen to twenty, including if we get a WEX camera. We're a much smaller community, and I'm curious why we would have more cameras than much larger community like, like Los Gatos.
Um, again, I will say, since I don't like to speak out of turn, uh, that you all know how long I've been here. So I was not here for when the original cameras went into Los Gatos. Um, and so I can't speak to the thought process behind that. I don't know if there's a thought of starting with that and maybe more in the future, or, or what that is, but I can definitely find that out and get back to you. Um, in terms of the number here, again, it was identifying the major ways that, um, if people were coming in to do harm or were leaving after doing harm, that they would use to get in here. And the thought was, is that if we cover all the entrances and exits, uh, around the town footprint, uh, that we would capture those people regardless of which route they chose uh, to come in, uh, or leave with. And so that was, that was the concept for this project. I was not here for that. So I don't know. But I will say that I do know, again, don't work for Flock, that generally, communities, when they first start with Flock, they do generally get more and more cameras as time passes, because they do see the effectiveness, and then they realize that there's more places that they could, but it's thank you, yeah.
I, I'd like to just add something to that real fast, um, because I remember some of the early conversations that we had regarding block cameras, and um, and this will kind of lead into a question at the end, but as such a small community, we were able to pretty effectively cover the entire city with seventeen cameras, whereas Los Gatos has seventeen cameras, but, uh, only, you know, a much smaller percentage of the town is, is covered. And it's, it, it, it would have been harder, I think, for us to say, well, you don't get coverage, but you do, and you don't get coverage, and you do, and it's like, wait a minute, we're talking the difference between, you know, twelve to seventeen cameras. Uh, now, the question part of that is, from, from our discussions at that early meeting, seventeen cameras, especially twenty now, pretty much puts a, I want to say, an iron ring around the city. But I have to say, there's not much left for somebody that slips through, correct?
I mean, that is the thought process. To your point, you know, sometimes there's a thought of like, you know, oh, let's, let's just try a little bit, and we'll see how it goes, you know, but again, then you're deciding, as, you know, I mentioned earlier, kind of which neighborhood, you know, is going to get the coverage. And then if one that you decided not to cover, something happens there, then it's, oh, we should have maybe had it there. Um, or explaining why you didn't have it there. So I think like so many things in life, there's kind of like the small, medium, and large. Um, you know, and if you have the ability or the resources, you know, most of us would always like to get the biggest one. Um, and so I agree, like I said, uh, I won't talk all night, but, you know, this effectively makes a wall around the city. Um, and so we don't need to pick and choose and hope that the next burglar takes this particular street going this particular direction, because whichever way they come in to hurt us, we're, we're going to get them. Um, and so that is, that is the thought process. It's certainly not a, uh, you know, throw paint at the wall, put them everywhere. Um, every location was considered, um, again, to the point that when we did the walk-around to every location, uh, with your public works employee, um, and looked at, literally drove, I think it was raining half the day, and walked to every location. There was a, a conversation about, does this lo- location make sense? I brought, uh, one of my officers from patrol who's been here much longer than me and has that knowledge of, hey, if, if this, uh, store right here, or this home right here, uh, were the victim of criminal activity, which, which road, based on your experience, do you think the vehicle would take to get in, and which one do you think they would, you know, and looking at which places made the most sense? And so each location is very considered, it's based on, um, training and experience of where people come in, how they lead. Um, and again, just wanting to make the most kind of cohesive coverage, um, around the city to kind of give everybody the, the most benefit of the, the technology.
Okay, Trish, thank you. Question?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I, I just want to kind of, well, uh, it, it, thank you so much. You guys have done a great job putting this together, and it's a great presentation. Uh, and obviously, all of us want to feel safe and, uh, and the block coverage. Uh, I understand you fully look for license plate, which may have been involved in a crime, as part of the block process?
Yes and no. Um, as that really interesting presentation covered, uh, while people think that Flock can generally just be used to find stolen cars, it can be used for anything that has a car as a piece of the story. Whether that be a missing person that's taken a car, um, like that example that they gave about the individual that ended up in Mexico. Um, we had that on the coast where I worked a lot, uh, where people, we had beautiful cliffs, we had the ocean, and a lot of times people would come there because they didn't want to live anymore. Um, and because of the remote location, they would take cars. And so we could put the vehicle information into the block system, and we would be able to find, you know, because there's only so many ways to get to the coast, we would able, we would be able to find them, uh, crossing uh, certain locations, and based on that, we could concentrate our efforts to say, well, there's a, a big clip here, this is probably where they're going, or a certain locations, and based on that, we could concentrate our efforts to say, well, there's a, a big clip here, this is probably where they're going, or a beach here. And I, I don't know if that answers your question. It can be used for a variety of things, not this criminal activity.
Yeah, and I, and I want to see how far that variety goes. Suppose somebody says, there's an illegal alien driving this car, this license plate.
No, actually, no.
What are the guidelines? Are there some specific guidelines in place saying, this is the only thing you can use it for?
The opposite. There are guidelines in place saying things that we cannot use it for. And so if you go to the California State Attorney General's website, there are provisions that say that we cannot use it to track for immigration purposes. We cannot use it to track for reproductive reasons. Essentially, those are the, the two big ones that I know people are generally concerned about. We also cannot use it to enforce other states' laws. And, and that's from the state attorney general. It is consistent with our internal policies. But irregardless, it's state law. So again, we talked about, you know, those instances where if somebody were to use this technology for something they shouldn't, that would be one of those instances that they would be looking at significant repercussions.
Yeah, that's good to know. I'm just trying to figure out, would federal law come in if somebody orders that from the federal purposes, you need to figure out whether immigration license plate or right now, would that be an issue for these banks?
Potentially, I, you know, I, I think right now, anything's possible. I, I would say that I think our state is doing everything they can to protect it, but we can't guarantee.
I, I believe block also has, you, you guys verify, but I believe that, that it cannot actually even be used, am I correct? For those purposes, as I recall.
So eh, each department, each customer, and well, our law enforcement customers, the majority have license plate recognition policies in place, and that really outlines how they utilize our system. And of course, that's going to vary state to state with different state laws. Like Captain mentioned, with SB thirty-four and fifty-four in place, there are guidelines and, well, laws that law enforcement agencies have to follow in regards to utilizing the license plate recognition, and one of those is prohibiting use for immigration purposes.
So that's applicable in California, and some other areas where they're looking for that, they could use it for flock. So that is really concerning, yeah. But, but I, I just wanted to see how far, how expensive that would be. Another concern I was there for identification, and maybe, I'm sure you can look at it a little bit more carefully to see if you can negotiate something that says, under those circumstances would be held, the city would be held liable for any civil rights violation, and somebody's going to identify us. Either our own insurance company or block, I don't really want the police department to identify us, because we're going to pay them back anyway. With our contract. So if you could look into that, that would be helpful. And another question is, some neighborhoods have put it up on their own, and we haven't had to pay for it. And that would be a good result, because then the city would not have any exposures, if the neighbors put up the block cameras themselves. So if we can figure out a way to, if the neighbors put it up, so that they're putting it up without us, and responsibility, that would be very helpful. And other question, other question I had is, this is going to cost us, I mean, the funds that we have initially, we'll get about sixty thousand dollars from the fund. But annual cost is sixty thousand five hundred for these cameras, or more, depending on how many we get. Are we able to use any of that money in future years to pay for that annual recurring cost, or is there a limitation by Los Gatos? Or is it a rec, uh, limitation on the funds that are given to us for this purpose?
They are funds that are distributed by the state, and there are limitations from the state.
So we, we could use it for our annual pay.
That's correct.
So in ten years, we'd have spent six hundred and five thousand dollars, pay sixty thousand dollars a year on this.
I would assume there's some inflation in there, but yes.
So those, those are concerns I have. My, my thought would be to delay the, I mean, we, we have time on this interview. To continue this matter till we have an answer on the identification issue. Whether we're fully identified, I'm, I'm fully convinced that this is a good thing to have for protection of our citizens. I'm not clear about the civil rights issue, but at least our state still has rules that govern on some of these issues, which should be okay. But I really would like to get a identification for us, because if we get sued, it's going to be enough for a small amount. You know, people like to sue us for big amounts.
And I, I, I'm happy to go back to them. We did have several conversations about expanding the identification and the limitations on liability, and they were not receptive, but we can try.
Yeah, we don't know, our city is very concerned about that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, excellent. Great. Any, any other questions? Okay, I had one last question, and it kind of had to do with Councilmember Lahi comment. If at any point, let's say the federal government said, we need to be able to tap into your flock cameras, because we want to do this and this and this with it, would we be able to shut the system down immediately at any time?
Yes, so something important to remember is that you all are the owners of your data. That means you are in full control of who you share that data with. If you elect to share information with the federal law enforcement agency, that is your, your choice to do so, flock would not, we don't make those choices for you. You're in full control of your data. And should there a situation arise where you want to turn the cameras off, we would oblige that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? So at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Mr. Allen.
Well, having been a licensed attorney for fifty years, I know there's no state more litigious than California. But I think we could maybe do a little homework, and if Los Gatos and Campbell and other cities haven't been sued, then I don't know that we would. Also, I go to Napa once a month, because I'm a board of directors of a winery. And I go up six eighty, and every quarter mile, the express line thing reads my license plate. So unlike flock, the state agency is tracking me from Los Gatos, a hundred and ten miles there, and we could look into it, but I don't think that the state has been successfully sued. So respectfully, I'm not sure that, you know, given the lack of litigation here to date and the state doing that, and all the cameras that give you a ticket if you run a red light. I'm, I'm not sure it's a real thing, but I think I agree, we should have the city attorney look into it. And then responding to Councilperson Shannon's question, when I took the community policing class, which I recommend to all of you, and to all of you, it's eight Thursday nights, it's free. Even though the population here is thirty-five hundred compared to more than thirty thousand Los Gatos, so they're eight times the residents there, they don't have eight times the burglaries. In fact, Monte Serena has two or three times the burglaries of Los Gatos, because we have more high-end properties here. So I think in terms of protecting the residents, we actually need the flock cameras more than Los Gatos does. And lastly, just recently, there is a burglary around the corner from me. Actually, right next to Tom Connolly's house. And we all have Ring cameras that we pay for, but in our neighborhood, the houses are so far from the street that the Ring cameras don't pick up license plates. And if we had a flock camera on Dave's Avenue, we wouldn't have been able to pick up the license plate, so. I'm in favor of the city doing this. I don't have strong feelings whether we do it now or July one. I'm comfortable in the council's decision. But I, I do think we, you know, having lived here forty-five years, I think in terms of protecting our residents, this will be some of the best money we spend. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, again, Kevin, Kevin Evans, Vienn Cantada. I wanted to talk just a little bit about flock. I got three different points I wanted to make. One, our community put in flock, that is, it's called Vienn Cantada in Twin Creeks. It's about ninety homes that are covered by the cameras. We've had them in for, coming upon three years. It's been very successful for us. I'm the administrator for it, so I understand all the things that they talked about today. And I will tell you, it's more painful to listen to your concerns about the council and a city's exposure, as opposed to what it's like to be burglarized. But I can tell you as a resident, it's very painful to be burglarized. Having had that happen to us, as well as three or four people in our community, which is why we put them in. So it's very important that you guys look at doing this. I'm super supportive of flock. And having worked with them prior to the captain, I worked with Sergeant Hoyt in the same area, very successful. So highest endorsement for working with flock and, and doing those things. The second issue is one that just kind of was a bit of a burr for me, because we're paying for it. And you guys are going to put cameras where they're not. And so I could argue that my community is going to say, why are we paying for it if they're putting in all the other cameras? And I can tell you that frankly, I'm going to convince them that we continue and renew as we have for the last three years. We'll continue and renew for another three years. So no issues there, but I just, you might get some pushback from those people. And I know four or five different owners of flock around the community that are going to be a bit chapped about the fact that they're paying for it, and in this case, you guys may look to fund it. And the last issue is just one that relates to the contract itself and understanding, it is not, as I understand, the purchase of cameras. It's an installation of camera, and it's an annual subscription service, software as a service. Therefore, there's no sales tax on it, but there's no purchase of cameras. And in one of the documents, it does say that you guys buy the cameras. You don't. You don't own them. You effectively rent them. And so, but that's, yeah, so I just want to make sure, that's a part of the document that maybe needs to be clarified a little bit. This says initial purchase of the equipment. There's no purchase. And so it is a, an installation. And I would just, I'd be happy to work offline with Diana on sharpening the pencil, because the numbers don't quite pencil to what I'm paying now and my renewal, what I'm paying my renewal. So I'm happy to help if I can, you know, save us a few dollars here or there, make sure that we're getting competitive. Or at least the same kind of price that I'm, I'm seeing as a, as a private citizen.
Oh, thank you.
Goodbye, thank you.
Yes, sure. We talked about timing. What are your thoughts on the timing?
Do it tomorrow. I mean, it's super important. It's the fact that we, we put it in three years ago, and we did it because we knew it would take a long time, but the city tried to do it. And we just said, forget it, we're going to do it, we're going to do this community, and it has helped us numerous times. And we've had four, four different burglaries that, that I'm aware of. In all of those burglaries, we helped, it helped us understand what happened. We had, in some cases, a hit, this hot list hit that helped. Working with the sergeant and certainly working with the captain in the same area. That our data feeds directly to the PD, they get instantaneous notification if it's a problem, car, or whatever it is. We're not involved. I get involved if my community member says, what about this car? I'm a little bit worried. I'll look those cars up, and then I'll provide the information to the police and report that as a concern, you know, just because they've got a lot of cameras, a lot of work to do, and if we can do a little bit of a legwork in terms of understanding and pinpointing. We just had a speeding situation through our community, and we kind of, the, the various Ring cameras are, we had that, and so I tried to connect that with our flock camera information, so that we could help the police department understand the situation. So all, all positive. Good, good, good information, but I wouldn't, I mean, I, I get budget issues, and you guys got to work through the budget stuff, but you know, wait till, you know, think about them, get a burger between now and, and July first, and then ask that community member how they feel about the fact that we don't have the coverage. It's, I think it's important.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any other members in attendance who would like to speak on this topic? If not, I will see if we have any people online.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, so then I will then close the public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to council for discussion. Who would like to start discussing?
I'd like to make a comment. Because we were going to be talking about this tonight, and because I'm new to the council and didn't quite know what all the history was, I had a lot of questions. I went back to find council meetings where this had been discussed. Clearly, since it's on the budget, you know, a determination was made to set money aside for this, and then to direct staff to go out and get bids and all that. From what I could see from current meetings, there was a meeting where several people from the community came up and spoke about flock cameras, all positive. I didn't hear anybody speaking negatively about it. There was a presentation made by Bill Hoyt at that time that gave somebody information, and got more information tonight. So the things I'm hearing from the community, from the police department, that this is a positive. However, I do have concerns about the privacy. And I think sometimes it's a trade-off, right? Kevin just spoke about how important it is to have the security for our residents. I think the residents do want it. But I just keep picturing as well that it's recording all the cars coming and going, some of which are residents and some of which are people from outside of our community. But most of what it's capturing is all of our comings and goings, all the citizens of Monte Serena. And even though I have no doubt that the police department will handle the, the data, you know, with the utmost professionalism. Certainly, I think flock is trying to do their best to make sure that the data is, remains private. We all know from all the technology that we use that these issues come up, that data does get breached. So my feeling is just that this is a slippery slope that we are going down by surrounding our city. But all of these cameras are recording all of us coming and going. I don't, this, I think that's a deal breaker, if you want to make that statement about it.
I may comment on that?
Sure. Sorry, Councilmember, were, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
My, my understanding is that there's a way for residents to register their vehicles so that the data on their vehicles does not, does not get registered or saved at least. Or did I misunderstand that?
So that's something, if I could offer, that is available to private communities. They are able to do that, but not with our, when a city or municipality police department purchases our cameras.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Lahi.
Yeah, so, so always the privacy concern was there, civil rights lawsuits was there, and I guess what I'm asking is, you get an answer on the identification question, that is really critical for our city. Somebody will cover this, either our own insurance or block or, and I really don't expect the police department to do this, but that could leave going back in a circle. So that's a big issue, and we do have time. I know it'd be always good to have something else as soon as possible, but we there's no reason to throw away sixty-five thousand dollars to gain benefits by, you know, putting it in effect on the next, next, next budget year, this week. So I would ask that we continue this matter, the next meeting is going to be in about two weeks. Hopefully, you can get those answers in two weeks, and we can then look at it. If those, those concerns are elevated, then that would be helpful. And, and the third issue really is, I don't know, how do you find out? And, and I think Kevin brought up a good point. Their neighborhood has paid for it, and my neighborhood also, you know, paid for the flock camera. You can get other neighborhoods to pick it up, and I, and considering it somehow subsidize some of that to help them. Then that might be good, but there is an annual fee, and it's a lot of money, six hundred and five thousand over the next ten years, I'd answer. So, but, you know, but we balance that against safety, and I can understand that balance. Like, I can't understand getting sued just for that, but so that's one of my concerns, and I would like to have this put off for a couple of weeks, so we can have those questions answered.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lahi, Chuck? You want to go first?
No, I'm going to let you go first.
Initially, I was concerned about having so many cameras and picking up the tab for so many cameras. What I would support is going for the nineteen plus the one mobile, which is the twenty. And if we could have that starting on July the first, I'd be behind that one hundred percent. In terms of the issue that Councilmember Wolter raised, I have a friend, we have family friends that are in an HOA, and we're whitelisted on that, on their system. So, you know, we come and go, so, but I, and I understand you can't do that on, on this system. But we're, we're whitelisted, so I understand that. I've got some other comments, but I think I'm hearing that we're gonna continue this, so uh okay, but, but I'm definitely supportive of this because I think that the safety and the security of our residents is what they pay for. And, and it increases the value of their property. So, you know, there's I, I'm gonna be supporting this. Okay, very good. So I would just like to comment real fast about just a little bit of history. Um, back in two thousand eight, I think, there was an item on the agenda that talked about increasing safety through the use of camera technology. That was it, it was just generic. And the camera technology in two thousand eight, well, I think if you've watched CSI or anything and you saw these black and white lobs on a TV screen, that was about the amount of security that you were gonna get out of a camera. And no amount of enhanced commands from whoever the movie star or the show was was gonna make that picture any better. And this council chamber pretty much filled up with a resounding no. And I just have to say, in sixteen years, the amount of technology enhancements that have had, you can really now sit down and say, enhance, oh, enhance it some more. I wanna see the man's eyes at this point, and you're gonna get to that really soon. But even with all of that, the ability to do license plate recognition and the ability to track these cars, um, I'll just finish up the story about the burglary that happened in my neighborhood. Because of the video that I provided to the Los Gatos Monte Serena Police Department, they were able to identify the car, get a description of that car into the flock system. They were able to then see it go out Lark Avenue, go on Seventeen North, get on two eighty, go south on one oh one until flock cameras ran out and hit in Gilroy. They picked it up in Los Angeles, figured out the neighborhood that they were in, whereas then the Los Angeles County Sheriff or whoever coordinated with us and they were able to find the car and make an arrest. And so that's pretty amazing, these things, that, that this type of technology exists. And nobody has spoken out really against it at all. Everybody seems very in favor. And I, and I'm very glad, I'm very happy because I do really think it brings uh, a measure of security and a feeling of security to the community. All of the neighbors that uh, that are in my area, I live on Vineland Avenue, very close to Dave's, are all for this. And again, especially after a couple of burglaries occur, um, it really then kinda spurs things forward. And uh, and I would also like to say, I am in support of this. I can wait a couple of weeks so that everybody can feel comfortable that certain questions are answered, but uh like, like Kevin said, I wanna move as quickly as we can on this, um, and I will then entertain a motion. It sounds like we would like to have a continuance for a couple of weeks. Yeah, Councilmember, would you like to make that?
Yeah, I make one more comment about um, uh, Kevin's concerns. With the seventeen cameras, seventeen, nineteen or twenty cameras, it was my understanding that that will encompass the entire city of Monte Serena, and so that any additional block cameras that residents currently have, um, don't make or break that plan. So maybe that's something else too that we should look into a little bit further, um, to alleviate any concerns residents might have that they're you know, doing our work, basically.
I would say, yes, we could do that. I mean, I would, I would respond to them by saying that our camera setup is really around the city. What they're doing with their camera is even increasing their safety even more because yes, we may get a hit saying somebody came into Monte Serena, but we don't really know where they go once they're in Monte Serena. But if they come into Monte Serena, then we know that they go to a go to a particular area that's covered by a private plot camera, the amount of safety, I mean, I have to just imagine it's exponential. I don't know, you guys can correct me on that, but I'm just using the rules of logic that are, we're in such a small city that if it, if it comes in on, on a, on, if, if, if it gets a hit on a violin camera, if it gets a hit on a twin creek camera, we're gonna know what's going on there much better than we are.
If it's just.
If it's just the one camera. So, okay.
So, so I'll make a motion to continue this matter over next hearing possible. We'll get, get a response on the question that we raised regarding identifications and, and bring it back to council at the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? We have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for everybody who came in. Thank you very much to staff. You've put in many months of work on this. Thanks to the folks at Block Camera, the Los Gatos Police Department, you've worked with us for so long on this, and uh, I really look forward to this coming to fruition. So, um, I think we have our our staff folks are here. They got this great presentation and discussion on block cameras. Um, but I don't know if you all would like to take a minute and if you wanted to leave, or if you wanna watch the President Dave. Take a break, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Get the meeting fired back up.
Um, there we go.
And we are back on the air, so. So we're gonna go back to um presentations, and we are very excited that we have two winners of the I'm sorry, Forrest, I don't remember the name of the organization. Santa Clara County Super.
Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association.
Okay, thank you.
Exist since
Sorry about that.
Almost sixty years in the valley. Thank you.
Yes. And so uh, I'd like to invite Adisha Gupta and Ellen Pang to come up to the front. And I'll have you stand in front of the podium first and introduce yourself, and if you could talk a little bit about what your project was. And um, see if any of the council members would like to offer you special congratulations or ask a question, that would be great.
Yes, thank you so much, first of all, for this honor. It's so great to get this support from my community. Uh, my name is Disha and I'm a junior at the Harker School. And my project was about reducing global breast cancer mortality and specifically about bridging the global disparity in breast cancer care across the world. So to give some context for this, um, breast cancer mortality rates stand at around seven percent in the US compared to twenty-seven percent in India and sixty percent in Africa. And so this staggering disconnect really boils down to the time of diagnosis. And if breast cancer is able to be diagnosed at the earliest stage, so survive, I mean, mortality rates are just about two percent as compared to sixty-eight percent at the latest stage. So my goal was to really be able to provide the same level of early diagnosis to underserved communities and developing countries using their existing ultrasound infrastructure because they don't have as much access to high-resolution MRIs or experienced oncologists and radiologists. So I applied AI, uh, generative AI and a hybrid deep learning architecture to the existing ultrasound ultrasound infrastructure, and then to make the um, project accessible, I developed an iOS app with Swift, which is available on test flight. So it's really to be able to, number one, reduce global breast cancer mortality and also make that same piece of innovation accessible to all areas.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to ask Disha a question?
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. That's really a critical analysis that needs to be done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question, just because the way you described that so beautifully, but I don't totally understand. Did you develop something that would help already existing ultrasound equipment to detect breast cancer, like a, a software or something for it?
Yeah, so right now, the best way to diagnose breast cancer is really through MRIs and mammograms. And ultrasound machine, ultrasounds are used in very preliminary stages, but they aren't very often used to make a diagnosis. But in a lot of underserved areas, that's the only modality that's really available to a lot of women, especially in rural clinics. So the goal here is to be able to take that ultrasound scan and enhance it and apply AI so that it can really be used for preliminary diagnosis as opposed to needing one of those high-resolution tools from the very beginning.
Oh, that's amazing. Good work.
Thank you.
Great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Ellen, it's like to introduce yourself and.
Hi, my name is Elin and I go into the Harker School in San Jose. So I'm in a project using AI to help um, like students that um, have like been bullied over the years, but they'll have like the confidence to like, um, to talk to their school counselor or like an adult or a teacher. So um, using AI, I kind of um, made my, like, customized my chatbot to turn it into like a counselor. So anyone with internet connection or like a laptop can just access it easily.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Elin?
Proud of you also, good job, that's it. Easy thing to do, it's both on both i iPhone and Android or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Wow, it's very cool.
Such a interesting project, yeah, to help others.
So we have a couple of certificates and I'd like, oh, yes, oh, I I made a comment earlier, uh, my daughter was a recipient of, of this a few years ago, and she's now in her uh senior year at Columbia, taking mathematics. And over the holidays, she's with us, she leaves, goes back to school on the tenth. Um, she's been applying to PhD programs. So I wanted to share that with, with both of you because I think it's, you know, you're on the right path. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to invite you to come up, and we'd like to give your parents and our staff topographer here. Come on up, come on behind the dice over here, and we'll have you stand in front of Monty. Gotta make sure everybody knows that we actually have a name for this little guy, and uh, let's see, who's here? Disha, yours was on top, so let me hand you this, and congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work and congratulations and, you know, much success. Thank you for all your hard work and congratulations and, you know, much success in the future. You're very welcome, here, let's shake a hand. And Eileen, there you go, thank you so much, and again, good luck in the future. And everybody get everything, that'll shake one.
Thank you.
A nice for for coming tonight and staying extra long, I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Forrest, I'm sorry, I don't have a certificate for you.
It was it was a joy just to see them there, you know, because we worked so hard for them to be sort of in a position where they can. You know, reach their greatest potential. Now, these are the kind of individuals who will be taking the world over. When I'm retired and sitting back and I want to know that I'm in good hands again, so.
Yep.
They are good, so I thank you all, and I think the parents will encourage you and drive them in the rain and snow, not much snow. When they visit, you know, during the school break, you know.
Well, that's the next project they could work on.
Right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank the mayor and the council for your consideration. You can imagine how much that means to. To be here in your presence.
Grateful.
To share.
It means a lot to us also. We look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you, yes.
More winners.
Both of them were from Montessoria, both of them were from Montessoria, the people.
Yes, they live in Montessoria. They may go to school somewhere, somewhere outside, but they live here, you are responsible for them. You know, waking them up in the morning is a good thing. You know, traffic slowing it down and safety, I mean, it's. You owned it.
Alright.
And the parents pay taxes.
Right. They gotta pay for my social security.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Getting there, getting there. Okay, let's see, item seven, introduction to wireless telecommunications regulations update. I think the staff report is due on this one.
Yes, thank you. I'm listening information item for the city council tonight. This wireless telecommunications ordinance regulates the installation of facilities, including personal wireless facilities. Such as multiple antennas, TV and radio antennas, satellite dishes and hand radios. The city's current municipal code regulations are out of date, they do not combine with federal laws. And which have required streetlining of permitting review of certain types of equipment. Additionally, our current ordinance does not address newer types of telecommunications equipment facilities. Such as small cell wireless facilities. On the attachment to the staff report does include photographs of different types of telecommunications facilities that will be. Addressed in the revised ordinance. And again, the item before you tonight is just to let you know that we are working on updates to this ordinance. If you have any questions or feedback tonight. We would welcome that and if you have anything else in the next month or two, certainly, you know, call me and let me know. We do have, joining us on Zoom tonight are consultants. From M Group who are helping us rewrite this ordinance, Asher, Justin and Alexandra. Who are available to answer any questions that you might have also.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just one comment, I guess, or question. I had mentioned Tarana Wireless at one point and I think Carl Bortino had also said earlier, is anything that we're doing. Would they be able to give you any input on it?
Um, I was in touch with them, I did let them know, we'll we'll keep them updated on the status of our ordinance. Our ordinance is. Mostly about the permitting requirements and the aesthetic requirements of these types of facilities that. A private company or a private user would want to install, so it isn't the city making the installation.
Yeah, just wondering if they had a chance to review whatever ordinance you have, because they have some comments. Because that's a new type of publication that they're putting together. And it'd be helpful to make sure we can cover that also.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
One question.
Yes, that's from member Shannon.
In looking at the current ordinance, there's a section in there about registration of personal wireless, you know, service carriers and providers. I have no idea how many different providers that are out there, does anybody actually register with the city of Montessoria? AT&T, Comcast, DirecTV, you then put all those different kinds of.
So we do have some facilities in the city currently. I am not aware of, I have not come across any sort of registration database or information that we have. Existing and we don't currently have a process for that, so. If that is something that will continue in the ordinance, we will certainly develop it.
Is it something that necessarily should continue in the ordinance?
So I think I'll defer that to our consultants, whether or not. That type of of registration requirement is still allowed. Thank you.
Hello, this is Justin Chu from M Group, I'm happy to answer the question right now. So in regards to whether it's required in ordinance, it would not be required. If it is something that the city would want to pursue or maintain a record of, that could be possible as well. But it's not required as part of the ordinance updates, it's not a regulatory requirement. Thank you.
It's something we could consider, we can look into and see if there's a benefit to the city. To continue that requirement.
I'm not opposed to the requirement, it just seems like it's something that's not. We don't have enough staff to follow up with all the different potential carriers and then we're making some register and some not register. It just caught my attention when I was looking at it, so I thought I'd ask.
Yes, that would be part of our consideration. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, council member Ben Chukwue. So this is for questions or for comments? Questions. Questions, I don't have a question, but I'll have a comment. Okay, great, we'll come back to you. My only question was, does this affect ham CB? Operators, people who put a tall antenna, since they're trying to cut cable and that's becoming more prevalent these days?
Yes.
Yes.
So it would include ham antennas. Likely, these types of ordinance generally don't include television antennas that are, you know, on the roof of a house. But a large ham radio antenna are generally included.
Okay, and then just real quickly to go to TV antennas, since. Again, more people are cutting the cord, I remember at one time we used to have height limits on antennas. Do we still have that or is that part of this at all?
If I could ask Justin for assistance on that one also, please.
And the reason I'm asking is because with the current situation of broadcast companies these days. You got, you got, you have to get an antenna up around twenty, twenty-five feet. Be able to get a consistent signal from the major broadcasters. And that was above our height limit for antennas in the past. So I guess my question is, is that part of, is that being thought of in this? Or is that a separate ordinance that, is it covered under a separate ordinance?
Oh Diana, I can cover this, so there are some standards currently in the city's municipal code and the zoning code. So we're not proposing to modify those standards, there are specific permitting requirements for different types of antennas. And part of that, I believe, is based on height as well.
Okay. We might want to include that in 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 the future, I don't want to put more work on you right now, but. Okay, so at this point, I will open it up for public comment, seeing no public, I'll see if there's anybody online.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, I'll bring it back to council for discussion, council member Megan Chuck, if you had a comment. Yeah, so what caught my eye. Literally and figuratively are at the back, the attachment one. And. If you are going northbound on seventeen, before you get to the two eighty, on the right hand side, you can see some oak baked trees. That that are there and they're actually masked quite well, the antenna. As well. I visited La Salto's Hills, City Hall, over the holidays. And they have a antenna there that's masked. Which is very interesting, I did not, they were on break, so I just happened to sort of drive by. But I would recommend the staff look at what La Salto's Hills has done and what's in their ordinance. I would like to have there, as a principle, I like to have someone else's ending point be my, or be our starting point. Like why recreate a whale and. La Salto's Hills, I think, is is very much a peer municipality. So. I would encourage staff to do that. And our consultants. Okay. Any other comments? Yes.
I did have a comment on antennas. You now have digital antennas that you can hook up to your TV. And they pick up the new TV signals that are coming in from your channels. So a lot of time my wifi doesn't work, but the digital antenna will pick up a channel forty-four and some other local channels. And they're just a little, little thing, you just hang behind your TV, doesn't have to go on your roof at all. So maybe I, that that might solve the problem, I don't know. Anybody needs an antenna unless you really have. You know, a lot of coverage you're trying to give, because one of the digital antennas are not that expensive, a hundred, hundred bucks or less. That you can plug into your TV. Because all the signals that the TV stations are now generating. A lot of them are just digital signals, and you can pick them up, get a clear picture, you're on cable.
Okay. Well, that's interesting, I have a hard time getting. Channel seven.
We get one of those digital.
But I mean, I do have a digital one, it's actually outside, but maybe it's just not that good. Right, supposed to be good. Okay, so this was for information purposes only, I don't think we need to have any motions or take any votes on this. Last call or comments. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to item number eight to discuss the selection. Of the meeting day for our strategic goal meeting. So do we have a staff report to kick us off?
Yes, thank you. The monitoring of the council meets annually to establish strategic goals for the next fiscal year and include those plans. Historically, the strategic goal setting meeting has been scheduled prior to the annual budget adoption. So that funding for the strategic goals can be incorporated into the annual budget. Last year's meeting was held on March nineteenth as part of the regular city council meeting for that night. Staff recommends that the strategic goal setting meeting for this year be scheduled for either March or April. To allow sufficient time for the established goals to be incorporated into the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. Complete the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
What, what did you, what did you have in mind for March?
I would say the second meeting of March is the eighteenth. And the first meeting of April is April first, the second meeting of April is April fifteenth.
What time do you guys need to prepare us for this?
I think. We could do it as soon as this anything.
What you did.
Okay, I will open it up for public comment. And is there anybody online who would like to speak?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, I will close public comment and bring it back to staff. And comments, suggestions? Yes, council member Megan Chuk. I really like the twenty twenty-five tentative council meeting calendar because it's showing where we've got. Lots of things that we have to do. And I see that on April the first, there's the adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six council goals. So. That's already. In the books, I guess. Well, it's a, it's a. Yeah, placeholder. It's a placeholder. So and I, I think that's, that's good and I, I really like this, I see this on other. JPAs that I'm on. Yes, it's a great idea. We talked about it a number of times and thank you to staff for putting that together. Sure appreciate it. So, oh, I'm sorry. The, the date that we're thinking is the. Second meeting in March, is that correct? Three eighteen, yes. So then the April one meeting is the one thereafter. Correct. Yeah, that would work for me. Okay. Let's, council member Shannon?
Since I'm new to the process and you are all much more experienced. Can you just give me kind of an overview, what happens with this, because I'm picturing a goal setting meeting as. Typically taking several sessions or lots of discussion and back and forth, is it something, how does the process work? If we're gonna do it in one meeting?
I'd say that. The process is. Kind of fixed, we have an idea of what we need to do with the city already. And what we're looking to do is fill any holes in that. And to make sure that we have prioritized. The thing that we need to get done, the things we would like to get done. And find out if there's any, any personal. Projects that you think, you know, based on talking with your, you know, fellow residents that something that that the city may, they would want to work on. And we used to have it on a Saturday, it used to be a four hour. Event. Right. But we had donuts.
That was on a Tuesday.
That was on a Tuesday night.
Get donuts on Tuesday night.
We probably get cookies.
Alright.
Taco cookies. And Joel Cole.
Keep us awake during the. Okay, so does staff prepare kind of what these, some of these goals already know, they prepare something for us? So should we be submitting something to you, Mr. Mayor?
Well, so what we'll do is a couple of weeks before the meeting is we'll send an email to all of the council members. And asks for their ideas and things that they would like to have. Generally, we ask for three strategic goals from each count, from each council member. And then we'll take a look at the, the calendar that we saw in the, in the agenda. And take a look at those and see if it's practical to put some of those in there. And then we will vote on it and find out if we'll have budget available for it. And then if we have, if all that comes through, then that project gets approved. So that's how, for example, the flood cancers happened tonight. This was actually on the strategic goals meeting agenda, or it was one of the strategic goals that was brought forward at the last meeting. And. And I think it's nice to have it on a regular meeting night because it gives the public a chance to come in and talk about it. And we did have a lot of support that night from the public, when we've had them on Saturday mornings. Yeah, not so much, people like to sleep in, I think. Or, or they've got busy weekends, they're already off in Sonoma or Santa Cruz, the town, wherever they're at these days. But that's, that is the basics of the project, if anybody wanted to. Fill that in a little bit.
Yeah, that was clear, that's what I needed to try to understand, thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, and I wanted to point out later, in terms of, Shannon. For getting agendas on time, if you're not getting it, then your time to review them. Should look at them rather than getting it for you or something.
That was a strategic goal too.
Thank you for getting that, also thank you for adding the revenue and expense line of the ordinance which I referenced last time. But I suspect you'll be getting us information. Hopefully, a week or two weeks before the meetings, we have a chat status. I'm going to be traveling and I'll be back on March tenth, I'll be back from like, really. Eighteenth to March tenth, so. I may have to do a Zoom for Pakistan, so we'll see how that goes. Probably, but. I still got even so good with that.
Great. Councilman Rolltire, you sounded like you liked the eighteen?
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay.
I think the process we used last year worked well.
I think so.
Where everybody made two or three suggestions, we prioritized those and. Here we are.
Here we are.
Doing it.
Doing it again. I'm hearing pretty good consensus for March the eighteenth. Do we need a vote? Do we need a vote on that or is consensus good enough? So, good to me. All right.
We, uh, for Councilmember Shannon, there may be a record somewhere.
Probably a video, right?
Yeah.
It's a regular meeting.
Yeah, it was a regular meeting, yeah.
I like that we have those videos. I do go back and look at them for various things to do.
Okay, so let's move on to item number nine, discuss and provide direction to staff. On the city council ad hoc committees. And. I'll let Diana start us off on it.
Thank you. Um, the city council utilizes ad hoc committees as subcommittees of the city council for special assignments. And to complete work tasks on projects which are typically later presented to the full council for consideration. Ad hoc committees are specific committees established for a limited duration, which can be for no longer than one year. Um, the city currently has four active ad hoc committees as detailed in the attachment to the staff report. The technology program ad hoc committee and the finance ad hoc committee will both expire later this month. Um, if additional work is needed on these general topics, the committees would need to be reestablished with a new charter and members would need to be appointed. So staff recommends that the council consider. Ad hoc committees that you would like to establish. Um, either the technology subject and the finance subject or otherwise. And staff will return at the next meeting with. A resolution. Um, documenting those, the scope and the members of the committee.
Okay. All right, great. So I think the first thing we should do is determine, do we want to keep all of the committees, especially the first two since they expire? Uh, the, the, the police one is in force until next October. And, um. And technically, the city manager ad hoc search committee is also still in force. Until next October. So why don't we start with the technology program ad hoc committee? And that's currently, uh, myself and council member Alai. Uh, do we want to keep that?
Just, could I ask that, do you think we still need to review some of this or has enough work been done but you don't need to commit anymore?
Um, I have, I'm not aware of any, um, concerns. On the technology program that has been raised by council members, um. If there are any questions, um, about what. What our cyber technologies and cybersecurity is, I'll certainly provide that information. I'm not sure if an ad hoc committee is, is necessary unless there is a specific issue or concern at the council.
Yes, so I would just ask you to take a look at it to make sure. Cyber attacks. There, there are things in place to prevent cyber attacks. And, uh. You have continuity procedures to recover data processing system we have. I knew, uh, it's not new anymore, I guess, the people who are doing all this stuff. So you may want to review with them to see if any of this still needs to be addressed on.
Um, we can certainly do that. We did have, um, probably about three weeks ago. Um, a meeting with our IT group and our. Bay area insurance group where. They have a bunch of questions for us on what our, our cybersecurity is for. Insurance purposes and they will be coming back with some recommendations. Based on that, so. Yes, we have been looking into it recently and we can follow up on, on any recommendations they give us.
It sounds like you don't need us, you, you got, you're able to handle it. For your staff, can you, your staff can help with it?
Yes, again, unless there is a specific concern at the council, then, but then I don't know.
Yeah, and I guess from, from my point of view, or from my, from my seat. Are we, do we have a fully fleshed out business continuity plan? Do we have a, a, at least a yearly? Cybersecurity checkup? Do we have any kind of penetration test thing that goes on? Uh, I know some of these things are required by our insurance or by insurance companies. And I'm sure that we. Are probably subject to those. But might just be nice to let us know the fees have been done. And that we. Just, just like we would do our financial audit. We pass the blind colors or. It took them about three seconds to guess the internal wifi password and run, run grand shot through our accounting system.
Yes, we.
And write themselves million dollar checks. Councilmember Mecha.
I think that it's important to receive whatever the insurance company is doing. Before we make a decision on this. And I don't know if we have to make a decision on it tonight.
No, we don't.
Correct, the current ad hoc committee will expire. You can certainly reestablish one at a later.
We can establish one very quickly, so, yeah.
Okay, um.
I would also put forth that. Anything that deals with cybersecurity. Should be a closed, uh, item. Close session item.
Right, and I've looked at other.
What other jurisdictions are doing. And. Cybersecurity is, is, and. Internal controls and other things are very much on their radar screen. Um, for closed sessions, so.
And those are possible to do, correct?
Cyber security is.
Okay, very good. Yeah, that's a great idea. Okay. All right, uh, so the second one is the finance ad hoc committee. And I guess the first thing there is, uh. Councilmember Wolsheimer has resigned from that committee. In favor of Councilmember Shannon. Bringing some extra. Financial horsepower into that committee. And it sounds like it is a good committee for us to keep going. So, uh. And Councilmember Mecha, if you still want to be on this committee too, I would.
Yes, and, uh. I had a conversation with the finance ad hoc committee. Um, and, uh. And subsequently, um. Councilmember Wolsheimer resigned. And I was. But, um. There is much that I would like to discuss. With the finance ad hoc committee and I was advised that nothing, no conversations could occur until after. The new ad hoc committee was formed, so I am, I would be very much looking forward to working with Councilmember Shannon on this. And I think. Uh, it's very important for us.
Okay, great. So I would say that part of the direction would be to. Let's reform the finance ad hoc committee. And.
So it needs a new purpose.
Purpose.
So, um, perhaps. The council can go through the list of items. I think some of these have probably been completed. Or, um, been addressed in some ways and maybe come up with a new.
Yes, Councilmember Mecha.
I don't see why. We should change a single word in the, uh. In what had been put together, I, I don't know where it is in here. I, I think you have to change it enough because you can't have.
No, 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 it's only, we had it with have, when was it going to? When was it expiring?
January sixteenth.
The new one?
So we didn't do a new one. We amended the scope, but we didn't extend the date. So we amended the scope in August.
Okay, okay, okay. So here's, here's what, and I'm somewhat passionate about this because. I've been abstaining from. From voting on financial information because frankly, I don't want to be, I, I, I cannot, due to my professional ethics, be involved with. What could be misleading financial information. And those items that are on the scope have not been completed yet.
Okay, and I think we just have to tweak it a little bit. It doesn't have to be anything major. Like, we could keep most of the same. Goals of the original, correct?
We might want to do is schedule a meeting of the newly. Constituted finance ad hoc committee prior to January sixteen. And they can come back to you with a recommendation on what they think. The responsibility should be for the coming year.
Okay, sounds good to me. And with your travels, are you going to be able to?
Well, um. What I would like to do. If there's a new member on the ad hoc committee. Is have that conversation tomorrow. Okay.
Uh, do we have to vote to change the members?
You already did that on consent.
We did, that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, you already have a new member.
We already have.
Yeah, you already have one, so.
So we're good.
But you can talk about this and then also what, so the, the responsibility and the name. Should be different, so it's a new committee, basically, for purposes of the Brown Act, it needs to be a new committee, so, um.
You could call it the twenty twenty-five finance ad hoc committee.
And so maybe some broader topics might be better than the, the specificity, so that might give you a little more flexibility.
Council's.
Uh, I don't think it'll be difficult to come up with items for it. Um, and if I can just comment on, on, uh. Councilmember Mecha's comment about abstaining from the warrant list. The warrant list is just, because it's just approving payments that need to be made, I'm comfortable. With that. Given what's happening with, um, our outside, um, contractors, getting our books and records all. Up to date, not, nothing of a financial nature has come before us yet. So I'm comfortable with, um. Voting on the warrant list.
Okay, sounds good.
One additional item you could probably add is to ensure that the financial records are not subject to cyber attack. Would be one of the goals in finance committee.
And did you, sorry, Brian, did you say you wanted to meet maybe tomorrow?
I was hoping you could have a Zoom call. Or a phone call.
That should be possible. Okay, do you want to clock out, George?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Okay. Probably get thirty thousand. Or you could get up at three thirty in the morning and.
No, it's way to the airport, it'll be very busy.
All right, I have seven and a half hours in EFW tomorrow. Yeah, I have at least four Zoom meetings, right?
Oh, wow.
Now maybe five.
No, this is one of them. I, I, I hope, uh, what do you have, Centurion Club or?
I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be in the flagship lounge.
Oh, nice, okay. Uh, okay, let's move on to the city manager search ad hoc committee. Uh, that was, uh. Councilmember Wolsheimer and myself. And I think we were keeping this as a mayor vice mayor committee, so.
It's in existence until October, so there's actually nothing that you need to do unless you wanted to change it, but otherwise it'll stay in effect as is until October.
But do we want to keep, um, the members? Like, if, if, if we had mayor, vice mayor, do we want to have Councilmember Lawhee take over Councilmember Wolsheimer's position?
I'm leaving to Councilmember Wolsheimer, I'm going to stay all night.
Okay. Doug, stay on, I'm, yes, okay, done. And the police ad, the police services ad hoc committee. That was myself and Councilmember Mecha Chuck, and I would definitely like to stay on that, and I would love to have Councilmember Mecha. Working with me on that, because you've done a lot of work with this already and. Your guidance and input is extremely valuable. So, and we don't have to do anything there anyway. So I think we've given direction.
Yes.
And we can move off of this. We don't need to take, uh, well, let's take public comment just in case. Any public commenters online?
No hands are raised.
Surprise, okay, that closes. Item number nine and let's move on to item number ten and find out who is going to be. Going to some really exciting meetings around Santa Clara County. In twenty twenty-five. So, um, the one item that I wanted to bring up in the beginning was. Uh, Councilmember Mecha. Is not going to be available to attend Silicon Valley Clean Energy meeting. And it was proposed that Councilmember Shannon take over, but she's not able to attend tomorrow. So do we have to do all of the committee assignments at the same time? Can we put this one off or can we say that this one takes effect January thirty-first or? Is there, is there flexibility? We can do whatever we want. Okay, so, um, based on conversations I had with everybody. I took a stab at trying to put together a, what I think everybody would like to do, I tried not to overload anybody. Wanted to make sure our newest council member had some interesting and, and fun, uh, committees that, that she could attend. Are you happy with yours?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is everybody happy with their committee commission assignments?
That's good.
Anybody want to change? Take now, whoever hold your peace. Brian?
No, no, I, I think, I think this is, this is good, um. The. The one thing that I will say about SBC is that. The alternates and the primary. There are certain. There are certain, uh. Committees that alternates can be on, but. And you must be. Uh, a sitting member to be on other committees, right, so, um. And they do have a, a little training program. So it would be good to get, uh, Councilmember Shannon involved sooner rather than later, but. Uh, tomorrow night, it's very weird. But usually the meeting should be the week after.
Yeah.
But it's like, it's, and I booked this trip to Argentina, thinking it was the following week, right? So if we could just get through that, that would be really good, because I think there's some. The training you need to get dialed in on and then also there's some subcommittees that you may be interested in.
Even as an alternate?
Yeah. And I, I think, um, when, uh, Councilmember Lawhee was on, he encouraged me to, as the alternate. To go on the subcommittees.
And so still attend the meetings, so.
You, you don't have to attend both meetings. But the subcommittee meetings, there, there are alternates that attend the subcommittee meetings. And so, for example. There's a finance and administration committee. And I'm on the audit committee. So I don't feel comfortable being on the finance committee and also being chair of the audit committee. So, but I think you would be an excellent addition to the finance committee. And you can be on that as a, as an alternate. Sorry, if we're going into too much detail, we can.
I, I think this is really good. I think it'd be really helpful, Councilmember Shannon, because she's not familiar with it. Those committees are really powerful in the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They get a lot, then you were also on one of the main committees on that. Are you still on it? The one bit of, all the stuff goes to before it comes to the bottom.
No, that's, that's not a Brown Act committee, and, yeah. That one's, that's a different animal.
But so there are other committees, and maybe worth it for you, you can make it tomorrow, but. Certainly, certainly you can follow it. They do it every once every month, but the committee's been also. And that's where you're moving into it, and I think it's, they're powerful committees.
And they really need someone on the finance committee right now.
Okay.
We can talk about it offline.
Okay. Well, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, bringing it back to council, um, I would entertain a motion to approve this list, uh, making. Uh, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy appointment, uh, effective January the ninth.
So we'll.
Yes, oh, do you have a second? You, he, he moved, you seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a roll call vote or is this just, uh, all in favor? This will take us to committee commission reports. Wow, how did that look now? We'll start on the left hand side today. Councilmember Mecha.
Okay, um, first thing, um, it's noted correctly on. The committee and commission assignments, but it's Silicon Valley Stormwater Authority. So, um. And in terms of my report, it is. Give me a second. Give me a second. Uh the B T A Policy Advisory Committee, the the December meeting was canceled. And the next meeting is on the sixteenth at four P M. So I will report back on that at the at the next meeting uh. West Valley Clean Water Authority, so that needs to change. Um but the next meeting is, it's a quarterly meeting, so there's nothing to report on that. Uh Solid Waste Management Authority, they're setting up the meetings for the year. Um. And I will report on that at the next meeting, and Silicon Valley Clean Energy uh. They um are having their meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
And so uh they're gonna have a new chair and a vice chair, and they're gonna uh. Nominate, or they're gonna set the the executive committee. And I uh wish to be on the executive committee, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember Wolchheimer.
There are no meetings, uh so I have nothing to report, okay? Councilmember Lawhee, no meetings, nothing to report.
Okay.
I haven't had the opportunity yet, so next time.
Next time, and I don't have anything to report either. So that will take us to the city manager report. Exciting?
Very exciting, it's very exciting, um want us to right now add another year of a successful. Um coats and cans drive this year, um there were about twenty jackets collected. Um several canned goods and several um personal hygiene items. Including one hundred and thirty-four of the airline amenity kits that were donated by the Site and Architectural Commissioner Donna Tan. So apparently she collects them and and don't throughout the year and then donates them, so that was fantastic. And these items um will be, are for donation to West Valley Community Services. And then the second item I had, um we just mentioned a few minutes ago, is on the council agendas. Um starting with this meeting's agenda, under the future agenda items, we will include the tentative. Calendar for meetings for the remainder of the calendar year. And this item is intended for information, um of course, items will loop throughout the year as. As the calendar um is updated, right, certainly if there's any questions at the council meeting, it can. Could sort of be brought up, but it is intended just for information if there isn't any questions. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, so I made my own change in the quarters of the day. And I'm still used to the city manager report after council member comments, but. Or before, so council member comments, anybody have any comments? We'll start on the right hand side.
I I agree.
Anything, Councilmember Shannon?
Um no comments other than just to say I'm happy to get my committee assignments, I'm excited we're gonna be working together on the finance. Ad hoc committee as well, um I'm really looking forward to getting up and running and having a great year.
Great.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, I I don't have any comments, I mean, it was a future, it's a day, I'm gonna get to that.
Okay, I don't have any comments.
Happy to hear, everybody, happy to hear.
Okay, I'll I'll just make a comment that um. The presentation on the flock cameras and and you know, the the discussion we had with the new captain. I mean, I think that's, she's a great addition to uh Los Santos M S P D. And you could really see the and hear the experience and and the knowledge coming through. So um I thought that was really good, and then also having participation from our community in particular uh. Kevin Evans, you know, I mean, that's. I think uh building community here is very important.
Okay. Uh I did have one comment that I wanted to make, and uh. I wanted to know how much work or effort it would take, and in the tech world, you probably hear it a lot, T L D R. If we could maybe put a couple of sentences that would kind of just highlight what are we talking about? So for example, on the block cameras, we'll put an iron ring around the city. Budget impact for twenty twenty-five will be hundred and ten thousand dollars. Annual renewal cost will be sixty-five thousand dollars, or you know, whatever the actual numbers turn out to be. And it's just like three things real fast so that people don't have to read the entire. Staff notes to be able to figure out what's going on.
What the T L D R is?
Yeah. So that was my only comment for tonight, I I thought it would be interesting to try it out, and if it doesn't turn out to be. Something or if it's too much of a burden on staff, um let us know.
Yes, we can certainly do that, that's a great idea.
Yes.
It almost sounds like at the at the bottom of each step report, it seems like you have sort of a conclusion of. Summing it up right here, so maybe almost just taking that and making it like these bullet points as part of the agenda, it sounds like you're talking about right in the description.
Right.
Yeah, so hopefully, you just kind of keep taking that information and putting it in a new spot in a new way.
Yes, uh because so many times we hear from from our constituents. I didn't know that this number was there, well, it says right there, it was the fourth paragraph, sixty thousand dollars a year. On gold, well, we're gonna stick it right at the top and. We can't do anything more other than knock on your door and read it to you. Okay, uh Councilmember Lawhee, you said you had a future agenda?
Yeah, I know, I'm actually impressed the staff is able to give us the agenda. As early as they're doing it, so thank you for doing that, and I, what you're suggesting, I think you will fit right in there. Uh the agenda I want to look at is the staffing needs that we have, uh the open positions that we have. And I think this would be a closed session to really analyze, you know, do you need a full-time city manager, do you need all the staff we have? What other things can be accomplished? So I'd like to see that with the report on. Who is doing what in the city and what kind of role do we need and how much? You know, how much do we need to fill it with full-time people, or can be part-time or not part-time or whatever else? But I'd like to have that, of course, I can discuss, we can hopefully and honestly discuss everything. So I would recommend that we set up a process to provide at some point, okay?
Yeah, so so we can do that in the context of the city manager. Um and the city manager performance, the closed session um for employment does not apply to employees that you don't oversee. So we'll we'll work on that, but the agenda language may be slightly different, but we could talk about.
Yeah, so 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 we're not going to be looking at employees, we're gonna be looking at staffing needs. So do we need a full-time person for whatever job that they're doing, or with a part-time voice division, so we're not reviewing any employee that's the city managers. Review, but our purpose is to figure out the staffing needs for the city.
So so one of the things that we talked about is doing that in the context of the budget.
But what you'll be open, but I'd like to do this in the post session possibly, because that way you can fully discuss what's going on and what we.
Okay, and set that up.
There are some limitations on that, but we can talk about that.
Okay, yeah, all right, sounds good. And I was remember Shannon, did you have any ideas for a future agenda item?
No.
Okay. And Councilmember Mecha.
If I could just go back to my council member comments for a moment?
Sure.
Um. I know that there's a conference in Sacramento on the twenty-second of January, and I I think. Councilmember Shannon's going, is anyone else going? Oh, you are as well?
Yeah.
Um I'm gonna be, I've been planning a trip to uh Sacramento, and I think I'm gonna meet with. Five electors there, two senators and three assembly members. So if there's any issues that people would like. You can, I don't know if it's allowable for them to contact me, but um I'm gonna be having some conversations there, I just wanted to be. To let everyone know.
Okay, great, and you can take at least one of us with you, I guess he's gonna probably be takes both of us.
If he takes one of you, you you are fine. He just can't speak with more than one of you about the same thing.
The the issue is gonna be, this is the, I know, having been to the conference before, which is a great conference. You're gonna be fully immersed the whole day in that. Um and what I've gotta do is I've gotta go there. And I'm at the mercy of the scheduler.
Sure.
So it's like you've got twenty minutes here, you've got a gap, you've got twenty minutes here, you know. I've set three of those up now and I wanna get two more.
Okay, but but you're not attending the.
No, 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 I'm not attending that, so no, it's just, it's coincidental.
Okay.
Let us know, I mean, you can take at least one of us with you, that else.
Well, yeah, I wanna. I I really wanna have some one-on-ones so that they can hear, but.
All right, whatever your thoughts.
Yeah.
So just so I understand, you're, are you going like as a representative of the city of Monte Sereno or as a private citizen?
As a citizen. But I will, I think I will be, I've been, I've never been to Sacramento other than in the conference. So I've never been in the Hallowed Halls. But for example, the meeting with Gail Keller.
Okay.
You know, um and uh probably Josh Becker. Uh Senator and uh Dave Cortez and. Um.
Sounds good.
That's great, what you're doing, I'm curious to know what they come to say.
Yeah.
Or if I can get back to a future, did I come uh? Super when we're uh. Send send me an email basically. Uh she's sponsoring a giant initiative, and she wants to see me to look at that. The last sent me the information, Ellen to to. So currently, every city in the county and uh. Voted for it, except three cities and Monte Sereno is one of them, but I invited her to send orders to know. Forward to staff to put it on engine.
Okay. All right, um. This meeting's adjourned.